I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sheedram, would you offer a word of prayer for us this morning?
Yes, sir. Father in heaven, we acknowledge that we do not always have clarity regarding what we should do or where we should go. We need your guidance and wisdom to help us make the right decisions in this meeting. As we discuss various topics and ideas, we pray that you will give us clarity of thought and understanding. Give us discernment to distinguish between good and bad, truth and falsehood. In Psalm thirty-two, verse eight, you promise to instruct you and teach you in the way you should go. I will counsel you with my loving eye on you. We trust that your guidance will lead us to the best decisions. We also pray for open hearts and minds to receive your wisdom. May we be willing to listen and consider different perspectives and ideas. Thank you for being a God who is always faithful to guide us. May your will be done in this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
This time I'll call the September third meeting of the Hardy County Commission regularly scheduled to order at this time. And welcome everyone here. Good to have everybody out today. Start us off, Paul Lewis, if you would.
Thank you. Paul Lewis Office of Emergency Management, nine-one-one dispatch, monthly report for the month of August. Under nine-one-one, contractors in process of running electrician into the building and placing some of the necessary equipment in the building. Lost City Tower. Southern State has already put the propane tank there and I have made contact with power connect on the generator. We'll be moving the generator from the old nine-one-one center to that site. And they're working on that with a contractor and electrician on that. I made contact or have made contact with USL. You're supposed to be sending me a name of somebody to discuss putting cell service on the lost city tower. And I hope have some of it done. Still haven't got any more information from T-Mobile. So I'm hoping to see some of those guys. We have OEM conference next week and some of them show up there at their conference in Flatwoods. So I might get to talk to some of them there. So that's where I'll be next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It'll be in Flatwoods. Currently have two new dispatchers. Luckily, both of them showed up yesterday for the first day. So they are starting now. So hopefully I have a full staff. I have had about four people out within the last two weeks of COVID. Our schedule has been a little hectic with a lot of overtime trying to fill those slots. I'll be looking for different programs like I have said in the past for the next gen nine-one-one system. There's several companies out there to provide that service and probably some of those are meeting next week, I'm sure. We've finally got approval from the state sirens group to the ever TAC channel added to the system. So we already have TAC one through five on the system. So we'll have TAC six. We also have an emergency TAC for first responders. If they get in trouble, they can push a button and it'll tell us exactly who has that portable. So that will be going on the system as soon as I can get some stuff done through Aviott on that. I have finally received the final payment on the SHSGP grant for the tower in the Mount Assurant, forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. And that completes the four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars for the tower, which is for the motor oil equipment and the Aviott equipment for that tower. Still leaves about a seventy-thousand dollar expense there I'm going to pay on the motor oil side. Because I think our total bill is four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Call volume from my office had six-hundred-and-seventy-three calls that came into the nine-one-one center. Law enforcement had the following. Department of Natural Resources had nineteen calls. Hardy County Sheriff's Office had three oh one. Morefield Police Department had a hundred and seventy-two and West Virginia State Police had fifty-one calls. On the EMS side, West Hardy Ambulance Service had a hundred and eleven. The ACEA had seventy-six and Boardsville Rescue had thirty-five. Fire Department had following calls. Cape Valley had eight. Mathias Becker eleven. Morefield Fire Department had thirty calls. We had thirty-three calls went to Department of Highways. Most of those were trees. We've had a lot of trees down recently. A lot of them up the south fork mainly, so. Under the Office of Emergency Management, we finally got our award letter for the twenty-twenty-two EMPG in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. That money has not came in yet, but should be coming in shortly. We will be working on twenty-twenty-three EMPG as soon as that app is released and it gives the go-ahead on that. Still working on state on the approval of the SHG grant for radios for the voting precinct polls. But if that doesn't come through, I think I've worked out another way. Since we have portables that we took back in with the new portables that went to the fire companies, I think we can take those and make good developments from that. So there have to be some program changes, but I've talked to them about that and that is a possibility and stuff that's already approved by the sirens group on this. So I'm hoping that happens. I did send them another grant. That was for some security stuff for the voting precinct or voting area downstairs or restores the equipment stuff. I have not got any word on that yet. I will be attending, like I said, the state OEM conference in Flatwoods next week. Hopefully we'll get some updates on the grants for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we're scheduled for a full-scale exercise on Saturday, September the fourteenth, actually. That's when ours will be required different agents to take part in activity. Each county will have their own scenario. Art will be related to a chemical leak. And the exercise is to show what the departments are lacking and where we can use that to apply for grants for equipment or whatever might be needed in it. And we're also being required for a lot more paperwork under the LAPC in order to keep the LAPC grants. And we have another quarterly meeting on that next month in March, probably. Any questions?
No. How will all agencies be responding to the chemical leak?
They'll all be notified, yes. And it depends on first agency on there, what else they're going to need.
That'll be an interesting one to get an update on, you know, to see how it goes. I know we've met with our, the West Virginia Association of Counties director and we were just kind of going over the pot wash meeting, you know, following the fires and because we're trying to do things within the state, you know, we think we think we need to be communicating what happened here. Other states, other counties can learn from that, but we also need to learn from other counties and states. So we're trying to do that. One of the cell towers, any, you know, like as part of our strategic plan, like do we, do we have an idea for where the next one? Who would want the next one? Because I had some people asking me related to service in different areas. I know a person in Fisher just asked me about, about it for that area. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering what our, what our plans would be for the next cell tower.
I would think they would be getting service unless you're in a spot where they're missing it coming off the tower. Because they have one on Charlie's Knob, plus they have the one sitting at the old nine-one-one center.
I think it is. I think it is maybe that they do. I think it might be that it's not as strong as.
I have had a person who owns property out in the bottom area. Said that their property would be available if we were wanting to go to a tower site.
Would that be, would that be a, like from your, from you looking at it, would that be the first place we would choose or are there other better areas?
I guess it really depends because I know it depends on what server you actually have. Because each tower's got its own company on it.
Yeah.
So if you don't have that company and you can't cross over one to the other, especially AT&amp;T versus the others.
Okay.
And I think T-Mobile and USL are getting ready to combine into one.
Well, should we start looking? Maybe, maybe we should start thinking about the one at bottom.
I don't want the services down towards the Bean settlement area.
Because we always need to be looking at the next. So, you know, that's why.
There is a tower available if I can get the state to release information, but I don't know if it need any work on. The tower's already sitting there. It's the one that's down on the mountain between the trough and Bean settlement area. That Hampshire was using it some, but they're not even using it now. But the state actually owns that tower, but I don't think they know they own it.
Larry Curtendall had at one point in time given the OEM kind of a
map.
Map where.
I talked to him about them. He wasn't sure where.
He wasn't sure where that map was or how things maybe have changed.
Once we've completed this, is that going to give us ample coverage for the county on the emergency service side?
I don't think it's maybe a hundred percent. We just have too many.
Well, there's another area we need to look for because the cell, cell comes along with that most time once you get a tower up.
Yeah.
So if we need another tower for that, maybe once we need to look at that part of it.
Well, and I do have a lady that has property, college room or up through there someplace that's been after me.
Okay.
On her property.
I think, I think we should definitely keep following up on those things and think about this, this next one.
Absolutely. I'll see if I, I'll touch base with Larry, see if he's looked through it anymore or not. I don't think I've gotten it in my position from the old nine-one-one center, but I'll look in some of the old maps.
Okay, okay. Hey, Paul, I wanted to let you know, which I didn't mind this at all. I didn't mind this. But I did get three calls when the storm was happening on a Saturday evening, right? Saturday evening? Yeah. I received three calls on that. I guess they wanted to make sure, you know, I was, I was aware that.
Yeah, every time I get a new thing that comes from the labor service, they could.
And maybe my number's in there multiple because I had had an issue and so I kept trying to make sure my number was in there. Maybe now I have it in there.
Isolated to certain areas. I don't think I got any.
I got, I got two.
You got two.
Okay.
I didn't get as much range.
You received three? Okay.
It's there to keep you awake.
Well, no, I was, I didn't mind getting them. I mean, you know, it's, it's important to get those and I'd rather be getting three than getting.
Yeah, and I think that's what they do every time they get a new report from the natural labor service and they put out another alert.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I think that's how the tower, the tower focusing on, you know, I'm really glad we're finishing up with this one. The people are, of course, you know, they're asking and just having those plans and continuing to move forward is very, very important.
Yeah, if I get any money from the state, it's going to be have the radio communications on it too. Because those towers are running about a million dollars. Time to get it completed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I think I just saw Nathan walk in. Is he back there?
He's back the other way. Is he backing down? Was that, he was right there at the door.
He was right there at the door.
Hey guys, what you all doing with the bills?
Derek Owens raises desk.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Bill, did he come in that back door? Okay.
She's out in the hallway. Derek is on the way. Maybe he's.
Okay.
We should go to the next person.
Sheriff, we'll go ahead and put you on the hot seat. Nathan, we'll wait just a couple of minutes.
Okay, you wanted to wait maybe till Derek comes?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
He's on the way.
Okay.
How y'all this morning?
Good.
Sheriff, how you doing?
Doing good. Well, this month we had a lot of work done with Task Force Drug Cases. They've been doing a really good job. Not going to be able to release any of the names because these things are too recent, the cases that we indicted on this month. And some of these people may be able to turn to get to do some work, you know, on up the line where this stuff's coming in here. But for August, they had seventeen federal indictments of seven different people on drug cases, eight other arrest drug cases. Fentanyl buy and Beanie Cook was sentenced to two and a half years on drug case in federal prison. So they're going out right now picking up more people today as we speak. I just talked to them a little bit ago. But they've done really good work this month as they do every month. And as far as, kind of crews are out, just a nick of time, we're vantage wrecked. We had one to replace it with. Luckily, he didn't get hurt trying to miss a bear down South Fork Road. So got the other and probably next week we may have it done or the week after. So get those in the system. And calls, we've covered up the calls. You see how many we have just ones we get from nine-one-one. But that doesn't even touch what we get the people walking in. But we send calls down from magistrate coordinator or make complaints. So we've been really busy. One thing we really have enough to take in is animal calls. Friday alone, we had five vicious dog calls in one day.
Wow, really?
Yeah. And as soon as I come in this morning, got the call to go check on some animals. Dogs have ended up somewhere. I think it'd be a star. But we've just been really covered up those kind of calls here lately. But other than that, things have been going really good. Guys are out there working all the time. Things going really well.
I met one going across code when I come over.
Yeah, he's going over there on a shoplifting and ends up, the dog already got the guy. He's got an extensive criminal record. He's out of Broadway. He's trying to get to Pennsylvania. I didn't go to ride or anything. But I was listening to the criminal hits from all kinds of drug arrests, violent crime. He was just happening, big passing through.
But he got him.
Yeah, yeah. One of those guys you just like to pick up, take a drop off in Pennsylvania. She was a little closer getting out of party, I think. Did y'all have any questions? Really didn't have that much to report this month.
Hey, Sheriff, here's a, here's something I was reading on Metro News over the last couple of weeks. Sent it out to some people just, just to think about where we are related to opioid, you know, the drug epidemic in the state of West Virginia. So there are seventeen, did you, you may have read this, or I have, but I just wanted to bring it up in this meeting. Because they say something in the article, which is that it's unsustainable. It's, it's, it's extremely concerning. There are, there are seventeen thousand babies born each year in West Virginia, only seventeen thousand. Of the seventeen thousand births, twenty-five hundred of those babies every year are exposed to drugs in the womb. Twenty-five hundred out of seventeen thousand babies born. That is not sustainable. And so, and you know, billions, so the, the focus of the article is that major resources are going toward the drug crisis, but the results are damn, I mean, we're last, we're last in, in these categories for, for addressing the drug epidemic. And they, the figures given, like when you're reading down, you know, because they bring out several statistics. And when you, when you read down through the statistics and you look at our population, you're thinking it's not sustainable. I know, I know you're, you're just one county, but I just wanted to bring this up. Because we're definitely in a fight for, you know, the continuation of our society. But it's, we're endangered of, we're in danger of being crippled, most certainly from what's happening, you know? And that's, I mean, this is statewide, but each county has to confront that. So, yeah. And the reason I'm bringing it up is you definitely should continue, you know, fighting and doing what you can do. I know that you can't do everything. We have some things that are outside of our control, outside of our control that we're, we have to deal with at the county level. But I do think here's something. Because we talk about, for, for instance, you know, we'll be talking about EMS services in some minutes. We'll be talking about several other things. These problems aren't going to be solved at the federal or state level. They're going to be solved. The, the counties are the incubators for actually solving these problems. Because at the, at the other levels, it's, it's very politicized. So you don't actually have problem solving happen. So like we're tasked with actually solving these things. So even though it's, seems bigger than us, it's what, it's our jobs.
Well, we see it firsthand because we were hand in hand to Sheriff's Office, those CPS. We have to do these emergency ratification. We review kids from homes all the time. A lot of times it's in the hospital because the mother will give birth to a baby and they'll test positive for fentanyl or methamphetamines. And you know, the baby's in their system. We have to take that child CPS. And we're actually the ones that goes out and serves the order to take the kid, helps them, you know, remove them sometimes from the house, you know, bigger kids. But right at the hospital CPS will take them. Yeah, we're right involved in that all the time. And I can tell you right now that it's not going to end until they secure the borders because it's just, there's a market out there for this stuff. As long as the borders are wide open, they can bring all the fentanyl from China, the methamphetamines from Mexico, because they're making billions of dollars. It's not going to stop until then because we keep arresting them, putting them in jail. It's just never-ending cycle. Whenever we get something, there's more to take their place because there's just such a demand for it and it's so cheap now. It seemed like once they get on it, they can't almost impossible for them to get it off. You know, I had one of the task force guys explain to me a long time ago how it works. It's like if you had a straight line like this and the best day you ever had in your life, the best Christmas you ever had, you were up here. When you take those drugs, you come back down to normal. You take those drugs, they're way up above that. But if you come back down, you don't come back to normal. You come back a little lower normal. And you want that high the next time. You can't get to it. But when you come back down, you're even lower. And that's just an endless cycle. That's why they can't get off from it. It's just a bad situation.
And I'd say the number you got are low.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And I'll say too, with the free Narcan that's given out all over the place, you talk about the EMS side of this. The amount of overdoses that we get that we actually Narcan anybody anymore is decreased dramatically. Because you've got vending machines, free vending machines, go hit the button, bam, Narcan comes out. So they are Narcan and they take care of each other before EMS has even called to the scene. So you, you're missing that chain now to where before law enforcement would get called to our overdoses. So then they get, could get in the circle there. They're out of that circle because they do it to themselves.
We'll keep fighting wars best we can. All we can do is take the fight to them.
Yeah, and I think the data continuing to, you know, just, because I do notice something, you know, at the county level. Often, often we're making decisions and it's, you know, we're a little low on, on the data side of, of, of trying to track things. Like that's one thing I would continuously say to people. Don't just, you know, don't just make an argument. We have to look at the data and we just have to keep working on that data, day in and day out, to try to make a little dent in things. Make a little dent in the, in the problems. So.
Well, my philosophy is we'll put as many of dealers in prison as we can, whatever we got to do to do it. See anybody go slow it down. Thank you all.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate your all support.
Yes, sir. All right. Derek, Nathan, are they still waiting? Okay. Bill Oars, Health Department.
Honestly, unless you guys got questions for me, I'm good.
I want to know about COVID.
We need to have the increase.
Increase in what?
With the project.
We don't do that here. Do we do, do we do that here?
We have to, we have to do it here.
We have to get the county commission approval, so.
That's me?
Well, that's us.
Oh, well, come on up there, girl. But it's Bill Oars, Hardy County Health Department. What do you want to hear about? Well, COVID, rabies. Well, you don't want to hear about rabies. I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'll give you a scenario real quick. Stray cat dumped in the Committee on Aging Parking Lot. I saw this cat last Tuesday out my window. So two young ladies decided to pick it up. It scratches both of them, gets sick. They take it to Mineral County to the vet, Mountain, Mountain View Vet. It is sick. Vet starts treating it. The next day it starts getting a little better. The following day it dies. We sent it off for rabies. So it came back negative, but the lady that picked it up got a nine-hundred-dollar vet bill. And this is just, it's an everyday occurrence. You're talking about, you know, the opioid epidemic. We got an animal epidemic. It's bad. And I do not know the answers. And I know you guys hear it all the time and I'm, I'm, I'm just communicating. It's bad. It's whatever you think it is multiplied by a couple and it's bad. And the general public, I have been on my high horse for twenty-five years. Telling people, do not mess with wild animals, stray animals, and it goes in one ear and out the other. But, um, so that's, that's the deal on rabies. We've had two positive animals so far since January one. It's out there. I mean, it's, it's out there. And I will still say that we're going to end up with a bad rabies situation eventually. It may not be in my career, but we're, we're going to end up in a bad one. COVID, COVID's hot and heavy. It's out there. My, my biggest calls are what the guidelines are. Basically now, when, when you're twenty-four hours fever-free without any Ibuprofen, Tylenol, so on and so forth. They say if you're out in public, you should wear a mask for the following five days. But basically there's no, no restrictions. We did order the new COVID vaccine. We're getting into small doses because it is not free anymore. The state of West Virginia is working on a program to help pay for some of that, but right now it's not, not there. So as soon as we get them in, I'll put it on our Facebook page and our internet flu shots. We're going to start flu shots around October. It makes my health officer Dewey mad because before we were the only flu shot game in town. So we could wait till October, late October to give you protection during the flu season. Well, now since everybody can get paid for them, CVS, Walmart, everybody's in the flu shot game. They're starting this stuff in July. Well, your, your protection's going to wane. I mean, you're not going to have any protection right in the middle of flu season if you get your flu shot in July. You're going to need another. So we're going to start ours the last September, beginning of October. I'm sure we'll have stuff in the paper on the Facebook webpage. Besides that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mallie unless you guys got questions.
Questions? If not, the health department project is moving along. However, there has been a change order and we learned at our last meeting that the credit was incorporated in the change order. So that left us approximately a hundred thousand dollars short. So we're requesting an additional hundred thousand dollars and that predominantly is going to be paid for the architectural. The electric issue has now been resolved and there won't be additional costs with that.
And I'll make your day. If I don't get the Homeland Security Grant, I have secured funds to pay for the generator.
Okay, good.
So I won't be coming baking you yet.
Okay.
I don't know, my piggy bank's about empty. Yeah, I think the, I guess the money that was set aside for, I think, some of these things from, what is it, ARPA or CARES?
CARES.
For the new health department. I guess we can tap into that regularly.
I was going to say, Greg, he's looking at you.
Four thousand there was set aside.
Yep.
For the whole project.
Yeah.
And we're with, we did a hundred and sixteen.
I would entertain a motion for that hundred thousand additional out of that ARPA. So CARES.
Care.
Yep. ARPA, that's what I was thinking. It's been properly moved. Any further discussion? I guess we have a meeting later on today.
At eleven.
At eleven, so that'll be probably one of the items to check off.
Well, USDA will need to have that in order to continue to process the funding. And I would like to process the payment number four that we'll discuss today from the USDA funding.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And on the, you know, you were talking about animals. Wendy's want to give an update. Actually, we're going to do an update every month now about what we're doing, which, you know, we've done some things over the last month. It's, so I don't know if you want to stick around, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to stick around, but I was going to say, because we, well, we, we're having a rabies clinic too.
One reason I'm putting this out is, you know, problems been mentioned. We got to talk about solutions and that's what we're trying. It's not, it's not just an easy solution, as you know and can imagine, but yeah, we're working on it.
Well, and I don't.
And what, what does it mean? Like when you say we're going to have a rabies problem, like that sounds like a rabies problem down there, but what are you talking about?
Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about, um, okay. I don't know if it's still going on, but there used to be a slew of cats out the, I call it the buzzer for a break. Okay. If one of them cats gets in a fight with a coon and gets rabies, okay? It can, can be spread through drinking out of the same water bowl, fighting with another cat, playing with another cat. It can be spread through the salaba of animals. So if we get.
Like more animals catching.
More animals are going to catch it. They do not do bait drops in this area. I don't know if you've ever seen bait drops, but bait drops try to stop the rabies from crossing certain lines. Okay, they don't do it in our area because we already have it and we have a ton of it, along with Hampshire, Pendleton, so on and so forth. But you get a coon, a skunk, a fox, and they all get rabies. Well, then they get into farmer's fields. Then they get in with, with. Then they get in with the cows, and the sheep, and the goats. And that process just keeps on going. I mean, we got enough problems trying to take care of the dumped animals, abandoned animals. I'm sure, I mean, I don't even know the number at the dog pound, but I'm sure he can't keep up.
There's 12 there right now.
12 there right now?
That was as of the 29th.
And it's like Steve said, I'm getting calls about vicious animal. The animal bites are ridiculous. I mean, it is absolutely crazy, but a lot of them are like, wait a minute, I gotta think how I'm going to say this politically correct. People are not using good judgment, okay? You get two of your own dogs that have a disagreement, and they start getting into a little tussle. The owner wants to jump in and gets bit. You're taking your cat to the vet, it don't want to be in the cage, that person gets bit. It's just crazy stuff like that. Put feeding your animal with the two-year-old walking around. Come on. I mean, it's common sense that we're not practicing.
Did you say education?
Oh, we need tons.
So maybe he means society.
Tons of education. I mean, you could ask Dawson.
You know, like doing it and having people attend and the process, the processes where it would be hard, but I think education.
I'll tell you what I'll do. When I get a chance, I'll track animal bites for a couple months and then just bring you guys.
It would be good, like that'd be the day, you know? And we could see.
And I won't use names, but I'll use like the circumstances of that animal bite, so you all can get it.
Area where it happened in. An area where it happened.
Absolutely. And another thing is, animal bites are recordable disease, okay? Not a disease, recordable incident. So every time somebody goes to the doctor for an animal bite, they have to report it to the Health Department. Well, now people's not, they won't tell who the owner of the animal is. There's no way for us to track it. So, it's a mess, and I know you guys.
It's a cycle.
Yeah, it's a cycle. You got your hands full, but it's a problem, and it's a huge problem.
There are people who absolutely refuse, like down in Marwood, they refuse to fill out the animal bite form. When they come in with an animal bite, they will say, I'm not doing that. And you can't make somebody do something if they don't want to give you the information you can. With that being said, sir, also, since we're getting a lot of Hardy County, down in Hampshire County, ER, I need your fax number, so if one of the, somebody gets bit here in Hardy, I can fax you the report that they do fill out.
Okay. You ready?
Sure.
530-7684. 7684.
Don't forget our meeting at 11:00.
I will be there, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mallie.
Thank you.
We have to vote.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We got the motion before us for the 100,000 for the additional needs of the Health Department. Any further discussion? Hearing them proceed to vote, always in favor, say five, saying aye. Aye, three ayes, the ayes have the motion carries.
I'd like to just clear to the public that 400,000 was originally set aside to be in conjunction with the USDA lab to build the Health Department. There's a promise.
Yeah.
Everything we take out of there, sooner or later, we got paid by.
Yeah.
Just want everybody to know that this 400,000 is set there.
Yes, it's been committed.
Well, hopefully, we will not need any more funds for this project.
If we do, Mallie's going to blow a gas.
Yeah, I'm at that. Yeah, I really am.
Is that a carry?
I'm going to drop off some of those flyers for the rabies plan.
Okay. Yeah, do that, and I'll, when I do myself, I'll post them around there.
Thank you so much.
Nathan Kessler, one of the directors of the EMS Authority. Last month, for the month of August, we had a total revenue of $125,902.21. $100,000 of that being from the commission, $25,237.47 being from services, $664 being from unclassified income. We had a total expense of $129,107.39, leading to net operating revenue of $3,205.18 in the negative. As far as building and grounds, you know, still from last month where we had that guy come over and check out the crack in the in the building, I don't think we've received a report on that quite yet. As far as vehicles, 376 still, it's only, you know, we don't have it in service right now because the key still broke off in the ignition. I know we reached out to like highway motors, a couple of place stores, an ignition piece to get it fixed. What was the last month? Audit fiscal year '22 is done. '23 is going to start this week. I can forward that report to you all in a minute. About Derek's going to have it with me. So fiscal year '22 audit is done. As far as personnel, I don't have any issues right now. Trying to think here off the top of my head, what else? You have any questions for me?
Um, Melvin had been the one who came and checked on that. I'm trying to find, I did communicate, well, he communicated with us on it.
Yeah.
I think, you know, he gave us what his thoughts were on it. He is reaching out to someone, so it is being followed up.
I figured.
Yeah.
Okay, I assume he had me in here.
Melvin will be here after all, after, yeah. So, you know, you've been working on some things. I'll do want to bring some things up. Is West Hardy here for this? Will they be, are you guys going to speak during this time or related to something? Well, we have another agenda item that you probably would also be interested in. Okay, okay.
I'm an open book.
Hey, that's good, that's good.
It's a dangerous book.
That's right, that's right.
It's interesting. I just was just, I've read some through a report that was completed by Jefferson County or for Jefferson County by a company called Fitch. I think we need something like that to be done in Hardy County. You know, there's been some debate about, and you could see it as you read through the report, you know? I mean, a report is a report. What I liked about it is that it gave you numbers, you know, and it gave you an analysis to be starting from. Like, sometimes you need a place to start, like to figure some better answers out. So I did like that, and that is actually on the agenda, that vote. Like, some things to think about. So these are some numbers. This is just kind of like back of the napkin calculations. So personnel. It's kind of interesting to look at the two business models, where the two main business models in Hardy County. So West Hardy's percentage, these are, this is what I have, but this is including under, everything under personnel costs. West Hardy's, this is for, West Hardy runs its fiscal year as a calendar year, whereas Hardy County runs theirs from. But it is comparing the two years as best you could compare them. So West Hardy's percentage of personnel cost is 33% of Hardy County's. It's kind of interesting because you start thinking about that and you think, well, what does that number mean? Well, so I looked at fuel cost. I don't know if this is the right number to look at, but like, you have to have something because if you have personnel there, they're transporting, that's why you have personnel, right? That's what I would think, is that right? Like, they're, I mean, that's what you're doing. You're getting called and you're taking the vehicle out, so you're using fuel. And so I looked at fuel.
Correct, but your numbers won't be skewed on that because we get discounted fuel.
Okay, so, because I have it as 52%. What do you, like, you guys are at six, what's the discount?
Uh, we get it at the cost.
Well, so that makes it even more interesting because I thought that a 52% number on fuel compared to a 33% number on personnel was a pretty big difference.
Brown Barb, what is our discount for the fuel, sir?
It's almost 50 cents.
Okay, so, so West Hardy's fuel cost is basically then the same as it's equal to, because even with the, considering that when I put the discounted number in, it was a 52%. So basically, West Hardy is above Hardy County on fuel. Okay, so, so there's the 33% on personnel, there's 100% on fuel, and it gets you to this place where you're thinking about the sustainability of business models. So Hardy County has a complete paid business model, and it's, there's an extreme difference than, when you think about that, there's an extreme difference in cost per personnel. And I think we should be talking about these things because when was the decision made for Hardy County to be that? Is it completely necessary or not? Like, are there no volunteers in the rest of Hardy County?
I mean, there are, but very few, far between.
Well, what I wonder, though, is that, and I'm just, I'm just trying to talk about the issues.
Right.
Because sometimes I'm not getting, we're not getting this type of analysis. Or I'm not hearing it anyway, and I'm just wanting to talk. But when was it decided that there are no volunteers? Like, is it, was that just, I don't know, did it just happen because the county started paying for it? And I understand that there are not as many volunteers in the world. I do completely understand that part.
Pretty much, that caused it.
But what I wonder is that, is this, like, is that codified? Like, does this just have to be that we're paying that in personnel? Or could we say, okay, new ideas have to be arrived at? Because I don't know that what we're doing right now is completely sustainable. Because if, so just think about it. If you say you go to a one-county system, well, just think about those costs then, at that case. Just think if that was the case. You go to a one-county system and you say, you know, well, we can't get volunteers in the entire county. But think about what that does to cost, and even with this levy, it wouldn't pay the cost.
Right.
Even for salaries alone. We have to come up with some solutions and.
Can I make a comment, Chris? And I'm not in their world, I have no idea.
Right.
But I would say it's probably hard to get a volunteer with, it's hard for me to go volunteer when Billy's doing the same thing, getting paid for it. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
That's, so I would say that's when.
That's kind of is my point too, because if you just start going down a road where you're paying and you're not even looking for volunteers anymore.
Well, I would say that's what happened to the volunteers. I mean, I don't know you guys are in that world, but I, just from being in the community and living here all my life, I would say if Mike's getting paid to drive an ambulance, you know, 10 hours a day.
Why are you going to go volunteer?
Why am I going to go volunteer? And then plus, I'm paying for the 911 fee or the levy or whatever, so.
That's right.
I think a lot of volunteer, a lot of citizens feel they're doing their duty by paying the fee, so on and so forth. Yeah, yeah.
Can I follow that one more? So one of the things, you talk about the business models, I think that would be helpful across the board is kind of like what West Hardy does. As I told you before, West Hardy cannot run as a full-time agency because our people have full-time jobs. If you switch that business model over the mountain or you went across the board, just look at what we're doing as a paper call. I have a lot of people on my roster, 40-some people on my roster, that can come in and give me some of their time for a paper call. And so you get so much, so right now, because of salary enhancement, you get $30 for signing up for that shift. So off the top, if you don't make another dime, that's how much you get. You go out on a call, you get three hours worth of pay for your time. And so that has saved us significantly, other than putting full-time staff on and having to pay all the stuff that goes with full-time, plus then somebody gets a little pocket money.
Yeah.
So there might be people that do that.
Is that what we should be doing?
Well, we've looked at that, and we've tried in the past, because I even pay, we pay double time for people to come off the clock to come run a call. And we had switched to more of a staffing board, so full crew. You know, we had the third person on for a couple of years. That's what we were trying to do was to pay people to come in basically per call. I paid them double time, so they went to Harrisonburg, they got paid six hours, and it took them three. And we still had West Hardy come in every live. So per second, do a dirt do call, stuff like that.
It may be something that you have to advertise, you have to work on. You can't just say, bam, we're going to do this. You need to set up that model, you need to do classes. And I know all the people, I have heard personally from people, it was at Mathias Baker, that said they were not coming to run for HICA due to personnel clashes. Everybody's going to have that everywhere. But if it's a system that's set up as welcoming and of what you're going to do, it might just be, take a while to get that underground work done to be able to get that move forward.
I mean, so, um. What's the thoughts on, like, we need something, we need some, a study done or something, like a comprehensive study. I feel that we have to have that, like, and it's either personnel from our county having a group and doing it, or it's hiring an outside firm to do it. It's one of those two. I think that, I think that Jefferson County paid $40,000, which, 35? When you read through it, I don't think it's $35,000 worth of analysis. I honestly don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have paid that for that. I wouldn't want to be in that position.
And did you see the camera study that came out afterwards?
I did, so Dave Workman was sure to send me that, yes, yes. You could see that when you read through it yourself, because if you're saying 1% on cost inflation, like, you're knowing it's.
That's a lot of money to put for bull crap.
You know it, you know it can be. I mean, so, yes, I, all I'm saying, at least it gives you something to compare with. Like, it's a start, and you have to have a start for the conversation. This is a start for the conversation, but what I think we have to have, and that was the idea behind the work group, I mean, it would be one idea behind the work group, is that you have to have at least a group of people from the county. It needs to be from the county because it can't be from one area of the county. As far as I'm concerned, because I'm county commissioner, not town council member. I'm, you know what I mean? I'm county commissioner.
What are my thoughts on that? Let me give you my thoughts real quick.
So it could either.
I think it's a fantastic idea to put the people who are working the system in a room together and let us work this out. You're hiring somebody for $35,000 outside in that second space, a garbage in, garbage out. It's all depending on the numbers that you do, but if you get the real people who know their system together, and we can work out a county-wide thing, not saying we have to go to one system, but how are we all going to make it work and work within this budget area? I think that is your best way to go.
I think it is.
And then you get buy-in from your people, because if you don't have that, you're in trouble.
And I think if you want to get a levy passed, there's going to be a lot of questions, and people's going to want data and finances. If you wanted to pass, they're going to want answers.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think we need to move on this. We need to.
Kind of have a county appointed.
In a sense, same similar thing is actually going on in Wardensville right now, isn't it? I mean, we have volunteers in Wardensville doing the same similar thing as you all have. So it's more of a Baker, Mathias Baker area, more isolated to that areas. Might be, I don't know, maybe we just need to go to work and try to drum up some, maybe some of the past problems they've had, they've kind of got away from a little bit. And I know there was issues.
We're starting, I mean, I mean, I see real time. I see a lot of the firefighters and paramedics stuff that work, you know, elsewhere, that live in the Baker area. I mean, they're coming on board. It's taking some time. I mean, like the Pose, we have the Pose. They're all on board, you know? Slowly, people are starting to migrate their way back into EMS instead of staying with the fire departments over there. So it's work, it's, just takes a long time.
I think it does need to be representation up from the entire county, because we're trying to solve the county problem. As far as, I mean, if there's a town that wants to work on, would they think they need to work, they can work on their area, but as far as the county is concerned, representation from the entire county. But I think we need to move on this, you know, will we appoint these people?
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to go ahead and kind of continue, at least in the next near future, talk about who might be involved in that. But I think you're absolutely right. And of course, it was pointed out in that Fitch versus Reality Report that there was no one involved from the local level in that study, one way or the other, so.
You do get my point.
Absolutely.
So reading the Fitch report gives you somewhere to start, and we haven't even gotten to that yet. So at least we need to put something out. If it, you can poke holes in that at that point if you want, but we need something put out as data so we have a baseline to even talk about. And that was my point. And so Fitch is there, I'm going to raise that, and someone can put, so maybe we'll at least get some better data back from arguing against Fitch, but we need something. And also.
I think the discussion.
Who could we, like, because if we are going to do this, what I think that needs to be done now is that someone is appointed to be, like, what I would make a motion right now is that we put someone as heading this up to. is that we put someone as heading this up to find these appointed people. Not just that we say, well, I think it's a good idea that we continue to work, but that we, I would make a motion right here that we appoint someone to start setting this county-wide work group up.
Okay, who? Got a name?
Um, I don't, I don't, but I'm open to suggestions. If, if you want me to be the person who, I, I'll put it out, but maybe we can hear some more discussions. So I could be.
Can I make a comment? Should you bring Derek since he's up, the director, up to speed on what you're talking about? Because he's a little offended at the word.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I get over that.
Nathan, Billy Joe, who, who should it be?
I mean, as far as like stakeholders, I'm looking at people like teachers, room teachers, principals, stuff like that. As far as outside people outside EMS, Billy Joe, Dave, me, Derek. Looking at, people have outside perspective, what they wanna know and what they're trying, what they, what they perceive.
I think that the, the head probably shouldn't be a teacher. It's, it's, it's a, it should be maybe, probably should be someone outside of the agencies, but someone who has knowledge. Uh, I, I just think probably most teachers would need to be brought up to speed. Not that they're, they wouldn't be able to do that, and maybe there is one who would.
I'm just saying as far as part of the work group type, as far as the head person.
I don't know, but.
Eastern hemidermis research.
Stephen, you may want to think about who was at the Mathias and Baker operations before. And I, you know, one of the persons was Brenda Peer, but and once again, I don't know whether she would be interested, but if you thought about some of the ones that were there, and, and you're right, they're, it dissolved because of personalities. Um, so consequently, if you could get some of the ones that have to buy in within the emergency services, that would be a good start.
I have a couple of thoughts about the who. You know, one, uh, if you're looking for somebody that can kind of come into it open-minded, possibly somebody like, uh, like a Brenda Peer. Someone who has some background in that, but yet is not necessarily vested right now in that, or, or a retired person maybe, that rather than us who have a vested interest to coordinate or at least to ask questions that may not be necessarily, uh, obvious to some of the ones that are involved in the day-to-day types of activities. I think that would be a benefit, uh, to this, to ask some of those questions that may, may not necessarily be obvious. But I, I, right off the top of my head, I, I'm not drawing a, I'm drawing a blank.
Well, I can work on it and try to continue and.
We can all look for somebody that might be possible, bring that name back together.
Maybe we can have that name by the, by our next meeting.
Yeah.
Be a good goal to.
All right.
Well, then I don't, I don't know, we really need a motion. We just wait till you, till you get a name and then we'll make a motion.
And we'll see if we can. And then I think we need to involve the, the Wardensville group as well, uh, in that discussion. A couple of folks from there and a couple of folks from West Hardy, a couple of folks from HCEAA. And, uh, and then we just kind of need to sit back and see what you all come up with and provide you whatever support we can, uh, what you need to, to get that done. If you need statistical analysis done, uh, I think we'd be amenable to, uh, investing some funds to get you a statistician.
You could reach out to some, if we need something like that, it would be, you know, we should be looking at it.
If that would be the recommendation of the group.
But we could find some data, you know, there, there could, there are many other companies that we can look to.
Honestly, if we have the data ourselves, we're intelligent people, we could fund that data in for free and not have to pay for a service.
Sure, I think so. It's just we have, we need to get that done. I mean, that's what we need done. Because for now, we just have, you know, kind of an argument happening or, you know, debate, a debate hap-. And, and we're not, we're not clear enough on what the data is showing to make a decision with that. And also, you know, as part of that, because that's just the first step. Um, you know, you, we need a five-year strategic plan coming out of that. You know, what are you gonna do with it? And then we have to get to that step.
The system, nobody will argue, the system is broken and it needs fixed. And it is broken internally, it is broken money-wise. There is no more money for any of the MS agencies and everything's gonna fail if we don't get together and get some, get our heads together and get a solution.
Yes.
And our county deserves better than that.
Yes, yes. But I think our county is the best one to sit down and answer the tough questions.
I agree.
Rather than going to a Fitch or something like that to, to kind of look at that. I think, I think we have people here that are certainly on top of it, aware enough and, and well-versed to be able to make some recommendations going forward. That's it. All right, we'll work on that. Yeah, good idea, good thoughts, good discussion.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
I know, right?
These are issues that are important not only to our county but to the state. And so, uh, yeah, we continue to, yes, we take this, uh, we take this, uh, yeah, we take these steps, like you mentioned before, we take these steps here at the local level to meet the needs of those around us and again, feed that to, uh, those up above that may not know. I think there's opportunities. Thank you for your input on that. Next on the agenda, David Bland from the IUPAT Painters Union about his union. David?
Yes. You can go ahead, sorry, one second on that. We do need to know if we're going to get a more additional funding request. Because it stands now, there's sixty-five thousand going to the HCA, but will we have another meeting and will there be more funding, more of a funding request? There will be for this month? Yeah. And I think that's an important thing to know.
Okay, we got.
So the, 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 the set amount right now is sixty-five thousand, but he, the director is saying there's going to be additional funding requests.
Do we know when we'll have that number?
Good request?
Yeah.
About two weeks.
Okay.
That's all we'll do, because it'll be the, we'll get through it and then we'll see what we have left, uh, for the rest of the month. I know that we have additional, uh, for the second half of the, uh, property insurances this month.
We may have to have another meeting here in a couple of weeks to address that.
Well, and we do have a line item, funding allocation from general county fund and.
I guess you'll explain that when we get there.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, sir.
Well, good morning commissioners and thank you for your time. I'm David Bland, I'm with the IUPAT. Uh, two months ago, I went to the county commissioners' conference over in Stonewall Jackson Resort and I talked to a couple of commissioners and one of them said, what I need to do is go talk to each commissioning, uh, go to each county and talk to the commissioners one-on-one. So I put together like ten papers, they're just talking points of, uh, so I'll have some references, I didn't really have a script or anything. Uh, but, so in my folder that I gave you, the very first thing I always get to talk about is the, the material on the left. It's the helmets, the hard hats. I recently just printed these off, they're newer ones. Um, and what they are is, is most of the unions, including mine, I actually represent the IUPAT, the Painters Union business. I'm here, I'll go ahead and talk about the helmets, the hard hats. So this is a veterans program. So when veterans get out of the military, uh, and within one year, um, after their honorable discharge, if they go to any of the trades, fight fighters, electricians, and roofers and painters and everyone, there's a direct entry hire. So the, the process to getting hired on, even say through the Painters Union, was considered, I would need one guy and then if I had a veteran in mind that I would like to hire, if I have thirty applications, I have to enter all, I have to interview all thirty guys and that veteran, just to hire that veteran. So through the helmets, the hard hat, we don't have to do that. We can skip the process and we can go, you can do direct hire to veterans, uh, after, you know, within one year of leaving the military. And what it does is it's actually a government-funded program. So my apprentices start out at sixty percent pay compared to a journeyman's hundred percent pay. And it, it works the same for all of them, but there's a process they go through. You turn in the paperwork to the federal government, um, and the federal government actually makes up their pay so that the, a new apprentices will make the same as a journeyman. And then as they get racist through their union, the federal money lowers. So eventually when they journeyman out, federal government doesn't get any more money, but it's a great program for veterans to get into so that federal governments might have given, if the federal government's giving out money, you should take it. That's the helmets, the hard hats, so we participate in that. Um, that's on the left. On the right is just, it's a flyer about the IUPAT, uh, it's about my Painters Union. Uh, we have around a hundred thousand members. Um, we usually have around two thousand members in West Virginia. That number grows currently, we, we need about three hundred high-grow workers that do, um, outages at powerhouses. They work about six months a year, about three months in the spring, three months in the fall. It's outage work, it's a lot of overtime and double time and per diem and, um, hotels are paid for. But like I've heard everybody, I've heard some other people say that the shortage of finding people to go to work, uh, we're, we're going through the same issue right now. So if you know anyone, we, we, we need like three hundred people immediately to work at mostly powerhouses, outages across the state. On the back, it talks about our FDI program, um, which is, actually leads into the next sheet. Our FDI, uh, our training center is in Weston, West Virginia. That's where all of our apprentices go. We have three-year programs, we have four-year programs. Our training facility was an old label factory in Weston. Uh, it's ninety-six thousand square foot, it's, we got it a good deal from a, a folding-up company, but, uh, that's our training center. It's for apprentices, it's three years to journey out unless they're an industrial painter, it's four years. Uh, we also do a lot of other training at the FDI Training Center. We do journeyman upgrades. Uh, the next flyer is just the elevated tank, uh, and it's at our training center and it was one of the reasons why we bought that training center because of the elevated water tank. We're still in the process of making the first water tank painting training center in the country. And we have people interested even from, uh, I've had some California contractors and Canadian contractors heard that we had this going, but it's still in the process to get going, but hopefully one day we'll hold that and, and that will bring more people to our state for training at our training center, uh, over in Weston. Uh, the next flyer is empowered women and, and I just bring this up because, uh, we actually do, we, I say we as in the Painters Union, we hire a higher percentage of women in the trades, more than some of the others. And probably the biggest issue for getting more women in the trades is the lack of women that apply for the positions. I mean, we're, 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 we're open to anybody and we have learned, uh, through studies that actually women are better at detail, so they make great painters and great drywall finishers. Uh, and when I was mentioning that, that, uh, the women in action also, our members, I don't know if people know this, but when, when, when our guys don't work, they don't get paid. There's, there's no paid holidays, there's no paid sick days, a day's work for a day pay. You know, we, there, there's no freebies. Now, there is foremen's that get paid their forty hours a week for six holidays. They get six holidays a year and only the foreman. So the regular, most, most of the workers don't get paid. They call off, they don't get paid. There's, there's no fringes where they ever get paid to not work. I was trying to mention that too. Uh, the partnership with Job Corps is, um, down in Charleston and it's sort of like that Mountaineer Challenge where they take troubled youth and, and kids and they help them get their high school diploma, they help them get, uh, their driver's license or GED. And then when they finish the program, they can get direct hire as an apprentice in IUPAT, the Painters Union and the Carpenters Union. I've recently just learned a little bit about this, but we're heavily involved in it. And, uh, so I just went to the first meeting a couple of months ago and we do get apprentices from there. And they are, you know, a lot of times it's troubled youth or youth that gets taken from their parents, uh, with, that they don't do good in school and they have bad parents or for whatever reason. But Job Corps is a good thing, uh, and, and we utilize it to get apprentices from and it's, it's in Charleston. They actually stay there, they live there. The next flyer was just, um, a bunch of photos of different jobs that we had done throughout the state. You can see a lot of them's in, in Parkersburg because that's where the guy lives that takes most of the photos. So that's where I'm from, but, uh, but those jobs from all over. We, we do, I was here, we did wastewater treatment plant here a couple of years ago. Fifty-two Waters was over here painting that. Uh, the next one's just, it's a reinvestment in, uh, in, in the economy. It's, well, a lot of, I, I, I feel like our state has made rules to where we bring in out-of-state contractors all the time to send our money out of state. When in fact, when you hire local contractors and in-state contractors, you hire local people, that money stays in the community. They reinvest in the community and the money goes around. If you hire an out-of-state contractor, those people are taking their money back to North Carolina. They're buying their cars there, they're buying everything there. They, they may stay in a hotel and eat some food, but, uh, and, and I always bring this up and, and I'm a hundred percent union guy, but if you can't hire a union, I'd at least ask, try to hire a local just to keep the money in the economy, the local economy. That, that's what that graph is about. The next was just a jurisdictional map of what I cover. I cover all of West Virginia and I've been, after I've been doing this, I've, I've been to the mountains several times. I live, this is best, my favorite part of the state is, uh, you know, I've been to Pendleton, Grant and Hardy and Jefferson County so far, but I really like the mountain area. It's, it's just way nicer. It's a beautiful part of the state, it's a great part of the state over here. I don't do much in Virginia, but, uh, I cover it. Uh, the next one was just a, um, sheet with different contractors, um, and these are West Virginia contractors. I put them through, uh, paint, paint contractors, drywall contractor, glazing, which installs glass, and general contractors, and there are more. Uh, but this is just a list that I've got so far, it's a pretty good list. And usually if you have jobs that you need bid, these contractors will bid it. Now, some of them's getting busy, um, and turning down jobs. So if you ever get an issue where you can't find people to bid, I can, I can reach out and I can find people to bid on stuff.
Okay.
So that's just a list for that. Uh, and the, I think the very last one is, um, it's our coating and corrosion expo, it, it was April eleventh and we have a yearly expo. And I invite, um, I actually invite politicians, but we have a lot of people there. We have a lot of state people, uh, water tri- water and wastewater treatment plant workers. So at our expo, we offer continuing education. And every year we usually have around seventy-five, um, state bridge inspectors. And this is at no cost to the state. So we put everything on, we pay for the instructors, we buy the food, we give away prizes. The state just has to send their people, we usually have around seventy-five, HNTD sends people, um, it's also continued education for water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant workers. It's for credited hours. And we do this at no cost to anybody, it's just an invite so people can see it. I had about twelve politicians last year and that was the most we've ever had and, and I had, um, there were some state representatives there, a couple of county representatives, I had a few mayors, but I will invite you over all personally, or we.
Where is this held?
It's in Weston at our training center, um, at the FDI Training Center. I, I will personally either send you an email or I will bring an invite to our one next year. We're going to do a patch fundraiser next year. It's a golf outing at the Stonewall Jackson Resort the day before. Uh, fundraiser for the painters, it's called Patch Painters and Allied Trades, uh, Children's Hope. So when we, our fundraisers. So when we, our fundraisers, we give all of our money to charities and from what I think is the international feelings is, is if you're an adult, you, you've probably led yourself to the path that you're at. And, you know, if you're a child and you need help, that's who we try to give our money to. It's just children agencies. So that we're going to have a golf outing the day before. But that was all I had. I just wanted to give you all that information and I will bring you an invite through our expo next year. Do you have any questions for me?
How many, you have 2,000 members, right? 2,000?
Yes.
From West Virginia?
Yes.
You have any idea, any of the number from Hardy?
I don't know. I know we have people over here that work at Mount Storm on outages. But I really don't know the number. And we need more people, so that's why I always leave my business card and say, you know, people looking. They could reach out to me.
Well, I'm glad you came. I think it's, it's very informative and if at all possible, I would like to come to that, your random meeting and just to stay engaged. I think it's very important.
Any other questions for Peggy?
No. All right. Well, thank you for your time. I have been delighted to listen to those meetings and I have learned that you guys are underpaid and overworked.
He said it.
He said it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Peggy, Alex is not here.
Good morning.
Morning.
I put the Facebook post on your table. This year, I mean, this 28 days, we've reached 6,900 people. Post engagement, 1,030, 1,130, sorry. New page follows, you have 21. That's pretty much it on here. If you have any questions about it.
Yeah, I think that, in thinking about this, I think we should work on some things here, namely, we need to have a policy for Peggy, I think. So that it's codified in terms of what she's working on each day. I think we also, as part of that, you know, so, okay, and I'll explain the reason. So just looking at this, it's going to be very hard. Like, is this, is this what you want? It's going to be hard to know whether that's reaching your goals or not. Is it your goal to get 13 new page likes in a month? Or is it your goal to get more than that? And we need to, we need to have that settled, you know, because if it's the goal, I'm, this, these are all organic likes, right? These are all organic. So these are all organic. If it's a goal to have more, you know, there, there might need to be boosted posts or, you know, some way to increase it. And I think that's a discussion that should be had and we should also have that in writing so that she can know it. Because I don't think, if I was doing it, I wouldn't want to be in that position. I think because what, it lends itself to, the sky's the limit and I don't know how you tell if you're reaching your goals or not. You're looking at a sheet. What's the sheet mean? I mean, you have to have some benchmark and we need to work on that. Like, you know, sit down with Peggy, go over, you know, we need many more sheets. We need to see going backwards, month by month, what those numbers are and where we want them to be and then make some decisions related to that. And I think probably, you know, she's posting, she's posting a lot of information from many county sources. There, there should be differences of feelings among us of, you know, is that going to be the best? Is that the best path to take with social media? Or do you want it to be more organic material coming from the commission? Because those are two very different things. And we, I don't think probably she knows that right now. I haven't spoken to her on this, certainly not within the last month, but I think she, I think that's something we should work on.
I wonder about the, you know, request for information or guidance to be directed someplace else. But maybe my view of what social media is supposed to be used for is antique, archaic or something else, because I know that kids use it for something different. I use it for other things.
I use it to check on my kids. I mean, that's basically what I use it for.
If we're putting stuff out there that's helping to direct people to other things in local government or local government services, then I'd kind of like to know that. So there's some, some additional things that might be able to be drawn from this that we probably need to explore further.
I appreciate that.
Hey, maybe Peggy, you can put out some dates to us for a, you know, some like work session meeting or something. So we can, that would be an idea. Just put out some dates, you know, I'll see them. I'll tell you when I'm available and we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. The auction sites, I did look at the gov deals and it said it was like a 10% seller fee. So whatever you would get on your items, it would be 10%. But they do cover a wide area in the state. A lot of people do use it to sell access.
A lot of people in our state? Well, you know, 10%, it's just going to sit there. It's not that, it's not bad to pay that. You should pay it and get the money. So, and you can move forward, like you could move forward if we, if we vote to do that, you could move forward.
I could go ahead and register us on the site, yeah. I mean, you just have to designate what you want.
Until we actually do something.
Till you sell something.
So at least I would think we should register and then it's an option. It's an option. I would, I would make a motion that we register to be on that site.
All right. It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it. So if you'll get us registered, we'll see what we've got to go there.
Okay. Website design, we're still waiting on Bill Scott to come back. His initial quote was $10,000 to $12,000 dependent. He wanted to look at it more and see what else is put into it. So he has not sent a quote on paper yet. And we still have that Mumba that was $139.
And there's no upfront fee with this, that company? Does that settle everything with the ADA that we, that was a concern? The Mumba company?
He said that, yeah, when we talked to him.
They're going to do the ADA.
Yeah. Did you want to wait until the other gentleman comes in? I mean, A J comes in?
We can, we can wait till he comes in.
Till his bid comes in.
A sample of his work. He did the middle county commission.
Yeah. And that's what he's, yeah, and that's what he was basing.
He's basing it off that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let's, I'd say.
Wait.
All righty. Maybe we can talk him down from that price.
All right. The only other thing is I'll leave this afternoon to go to the class that's in Flatwood.
Drive carefully.
Yeah. I'm really happy you're, you're doing that. It's a great, it's a great thing.
Anything else?
Sure.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Next, I've got an R D A resolution.
If you should have those, have a copy. Greg, do you have a copy for them?
I have it. I, you know, we did get a copy of it, Malley.
Okay. It's the Local Economic Development Grant and it's the one that we get from the state that gives us some additional funding. I do not know the amount. We're just trying to get everything ready to submit, but generally it ranges around 22,000. And then they also have a lot of conditions with the grant, which is typical of all grants. So we just need to have a motion that the development authority is the representative for this particular program.
I'll make a motion. Second. All right. It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it.
Thank you. I'm going to go on to see if U S D A is at our, for our meeting.
All righty. Melbourne, president of the Board of Education is here with a deed to the county commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Maybe a little bit of history about just how we got started on this. The board was approached some time ago about selling part of this land. The setting board now wasn't aware that the board was still the deed holder on this property. We think it's best interest to transfer that to the park association, to the county commission. That would protect the park if another board comes on at any other time. I'm giving you a rough draft of that deed. It's a quick claims deed to transfer it to you all. I just want to get your approval on that before I send it to the board to get our approval and get it signed.
As I, as I indicated, I, I have no problems with the way that it's written, all except for page six. And I'm wondering why a particular three-year, three consecutive years of lack of maintenance or disrepair clause is in there. It just kind of seemed.
I'm not sure. When it came back from the lawyers, that was in there. I don't know if that's a standard policy for property like that or not.
Mr. Clerk, do you have any guidance on that?
Oh, yeah. It even gives the, the person who will make that determination.
See, issue with that? No, it's a Baker, Baker Park.
I don't have any, I don't have any issues with what I see here. I'm wondering if maybe we should have the prosecuting attorney's office take a quick look at this going forward and if they have no objections after review, entertain a motion that we go ahead and allow this to be put forward to the board to consider and we'd approve whatever, unless there's an issue with what the prosecutor's office, our counsel.
So you want a motion to approve it upon?
Yeah, upon, upon approval by the county attorney.
That sounds okay.
Yes.
I'll make it.
All right. It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion?
Melbourne, when is the board meeting where you present this?
It will be the next meeting if it's approved by your counsel.
Next Monday night?
Next Monday night?
No, we have a meeting tonight.
Oh.
It'll be the following Monday.
Okay.
Two Mondays.
Two Mondays from tonight?
Six, six, ten.
Okay. So we would have till then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just so I would have the Wednesday before to get it on the agenda.
Right.
Gotcha.
And I don't think it'll take that long. I mean, other than what's in here, you know, everything else looked kind of standard form. So, all righty. Any other discussion? Hearing now then proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, we're at the A C A, Melbourne.
Comments on it?
They, they brought that up, it up there.
You know, I was overlooked at it. It appears that it's just a seam that has cracked over years. If the tile wouldn't be cracked, you'd never notice it was there, I don't think. It doesn't appear that it's getting any wider. It's just a stress crack from the seam from being on the field, I think. You can order, what you call a crack monitor? You can order it online. You can take it, you can put it over the crack and it's like an old torque wrench. It's got the bar that moves. If that is moving, it will move and will leave a watermark on the indicator showing whether or not that floor or wall. And it's under 50 bucks.
Might not be, might not be a bad thing. Yes, please do.
That'd be good.
Yes.
I'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I see the Region Eight Hazard Mitigation Jurisdictional Plan. Region Eight has completed a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. It was updated in 2024 as we are represented on the Region Eight Planning and Development Council. This was one of the things that they commissioned and this is a, basically a resolution adopting the Region Eight Planning and Development Council's Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the updates contained therein in 2024.
Can they send you a full copy?
I, I got a final review copy, but I have not gotten anything hard. Now, wait a minute. I might have. Do you have a copy, Greg? Yeah. I thought maybe we had received a hard copy. I know I looked at the.
Was there a part that changed or some of the stuff?
Yeah. I don't see it right there. It would have been on top. I think we did receive a hard copy. I received one of the review copies electronically. I entertain a motion that we approve this. Hazard plant, had a hazard mitigation plan for the region.
I'll make that motion.
You can go, there's a, there's a link. I can forward that link to you and, yeah, there's a link you can go to and it had, you can view the hazard mitigation. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Second. All right. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing now then will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it. All righty. Sheriff's Commission, statement that the sheriff's commission for fiscal year ending June 31, 2024 has indicated total commission for tax collections is over 85%. And this amount was based on the collection of $8,369,427.51. And according to West Virginia Code, Chapter 11A dash 1 dash 1.7, the sheriff is entitled to a commission of the current year's taxes collected in excess of 30, or 85% up to $15,000. And the request is for $15,000 payable to the sheriff for this sheriff's commission compensation. Entertain a motion. We approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'm properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Clerk can draft that. Anthony Rayo, is Anthony still here?
He is not.
Anthony had to leave. We asked for an updates for parks and like I say, we'll, do you know if he's coming back or?
Said that he would attempt to, but.
Okay. All right. We've got an update from Big Blue from Mr. Robert Oakley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm coming to you today for Big Blue, pastor, fitness center chair.
Thank you.
It's gonna take long. We do thank you from the fitness center for the money back in May. That project has been completed. All equipment is in. And we've had about 10 or 12 people respond so far. Just trying to get the word out. But I'm here today for Big Blue. In April, the commission designated 18,000 for Big Blue to be split, 12,000 for exec director, 5,000 for HVAC, 1,000 for security system. Recently, someone offered us four PTAC units, three work, ones for parks, which will take care of the heating and cooling. What we really need now is a new floor. So we're requesting that the 5,000 set aside for HVAC be able to be used for a new floor.
Any problem with that? Well, I think that, yeah, no, I don't have any problem with it because I think, you know, the idea behind this was for maintenance, capital improvement projects, floor would be that. And I think there's probably, at the same time, their board is going to vote on, we're just approving, that it's not held to that by the commission.
Yeah, we just wanted to be open.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's, you know, certainly a justifiable use of that funding. Again, again, do whatever's needed to make this thing, this facility accessible and usable to all those that will take part. And how many folks are using that?
It varies. We had 20 or so a couple of weeks ago. Last week, we had 13 kids baptized on Sunday. Have had some, you know, impacted to the football team. So it's, it's growing.
Good. And it offers the young people an alternative.
Exactly.
Thing, something to do.
Right.
There on the weekends and downtimes.
So the baptisms with other people, we probably had 25 that night.
All righty. Do we need a motion on that or?
Yeah, I would. Because I think we had that on the first, okay, they specified for that.
Okay.
We could get that.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Same move.
All right. Properly moved and seconded that we allow that $5,000, which was originally assigned for the HVAC system, to be reapplied and used for the flooring needs of the facility. Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Go forth. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We kind of talked a little bit about the EMS efficiency study that was done by Fitch Company for Jefferson County. But then the next item there on that is the funding allocation from generally county funds for EMS. And Commissioner Shitram, I'll let you.
We're on the funding.
Yes.
For EMS that is, I think we have it, you have that, right, Greg? We have some numbers and I just wanted to kind of go over them.
Numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, dude.
Okay.
Did you get those?
Let me give you a sneak peek.
Thank you so much.
So, and the reason I wanted to just get a, an update on this, you know, we had discussion about, for example, West Hardy. And that, it was, it is my view that most certainly that in order, in order to feel good about some funding that is going there, which, you know, we don't feel bad about any of it, but there should be something in the bylaws where there would be recovering that in the event of a dissolution. I don't have any plans for a dissolution. Definitely not pushing toward that. I just don't know how it's reasoned. It would, I don't know how that, I don't know how it wouldn't be considered reasonable to think that from the County Commission's point of view, you want to make, make sure you had, had assurance that taxpayer funding would be recovered in the event that some unforeseen thing did happen. That's all. That's all. It's the board's choice, though, because once it's there, it's the board's choice. I just wanted to have an understanding of what the position of West Hardy would be on that. It is the board's choice. I think from a commission's point of view, you have to have that discussion. And if that's not in that dissolution clause, clause, you wouldn't ask a question about it. If the board makes a different decision, you're just clear on that at that point. But I'd never, I just had made an assumption, I just had made an assumption before that that would be the case. And, you know, then I don't think it is the case. And that's, that's sort of why I'm bringing it up. Because, you know, there is, there is an amount of money that's been allocated here. And there's, you know, there's most likely going to be future, there's going to be future monies. And, you know, you just want to, want to have an idea of what the, the board's position is on something like that.
So what you're talking about, and based on our last discussion that we had, was you want in our dissolution clause that all of our assets go to the County Commission for redispersment if we would dissolve the company?
All that we would want, I think, all that, all that I would be looking for.
Even those cardiac monitors, all the stuff that was paid for in the very beginning.
Probably the beginning would be something I would think should be there. I would think...
You understand most of those assets aren't going to be there. The ones that you paid for in the original, because I've already looked into this and looked at what we owe them.
They're going to age out. No, most certainly.
Yes.
All I would think, and if we need to look more into the details, because the devil's always in the details, I don't know. We, you know, we just need to have the conversation at least.
Yeah, because I mean, honestly, when you're looking, you're, to the funding that's being provided to one side, to what's provided by us, I think we're giving a general mountain back in services that you're talking about.
And maybe that's true. Maybe it is. I just think the question needed to be asked. And if at all possible, I would feel better if it was there. Maybe the answer will come back that it can't be. Maybe it will be that. I don't really know. I definitely think the question should have been asked. And it, and I found out that it wasn't there at all. That did worry me. I think you should look into it. Because I understand those assets are going to age out. They're not going to be there. I'm not really, like, that's going to happen. But something, if possible, for assets, assets at least that came from that for there to, because there's always a way, you know, when you're, when you're making financial decisions, there's always a way because there's always value there. There's always some value. And just seeing how that could be worked out, that the county would recoup that if at all possible. Once again, maybe it's not, maybe it turns out that it's not possible. It's just that we should ask the questions and we should see.
I'll tell you what I think. I think when you look back at that 501(c)(3), I don't think there's one penny to be gained by any of you. I don't think it can go that route. I think it will have to go back to another nonprofit.
Yes.
If there was anything left in the event. So, and, and we have an obligation to the county to make sure this service, whether you all do it or who does it, is in place. And that's the only thing we're looking to gain is maybe if there is anything left that we can put into play. Don't get me wrong, we're not looking to go nowhere. We're happy with what we got. We're just looking down the road. And that's the trouble we're in right now. When this damn fee was put in place, it wasn't looked far enough down the road to have a cost of living increase each year.
Times like this.
Exactly. So we're trying to cross our p's and dot our i's a little better right now than what we have been.
I will give you the respect of, we'll bring it up at our next board meeting. We'll discuss this and see where we go from there. And looking at this that you laid out...
Hey, Billy Joe, here's another point to make on it. Here's another point. So in thinking about it in this way, it's not really giving, it's not really about respect. It's about, so the law provides that all inventory, this is essentially what's being said by the law. The county has the responsibility to provide ambulance service as much as possible within the county borders. What that tells you is that calls made for ambulance service, they're the inventory of the county. You start from that position. It's the inventory. If you're thinking about it in that way, it's the county's inventory. And so the county in working with a nonprofit to do this, it's saying that's the best decision at this time. But you would still, because if West Hardy dissolves, and there's no consideration for things that would happen, we're left, the county taxpayers are going to be left holding the bag. So it's not really about respect. It's just about rationality. Like, you have to have...
We have written, so our bylaws, our law, we are covered by the law. I can donate those ambulances to a nonprofit if I want to. That's covered. That's how our bylaws...
I know that. I know that. So I'm just asking the question from a county commission point of view. Yes.
And I will bring that up at our next board meeting. We'll talk about that. That's our problem.
Okay. That's good.
I think that's what we, that's what we could ask for.
That's what I'm pushing to be done. Is it would be on the board meeting agenda and that the West Hardy Board would have that discussion because more information than just want to come back in short. Yeah. That's all, that's all, that's...
So was there any other point to be made from this money that is allocated?
Well, I would, yeah, there was kind of in my mind, you know, like we talked about earlier, we have to find solutions to things and we have to hear ideas. So one, one instance of this. So remember, we're, we're working with a nonprofit board. Okay, the board makes its own decisions. So I think that the board has made, I understand that any money that is over and above from, I don't know if there's a capital expenditure fund. I don't know if you're doing it like that, but there is money being set aside for future ambulance purposes. So the board has decided that.
Correct.
Okay.
Our savings account, you might as well just name it Capital Expenditure Fund because that's what we're using.
Yes.
To replace equipment needed.
Yes. Okay.
To provide services.
Yep, we're on the same page. Well, okay, so think about this. Think about this. The county is, so we, that's why the question came up to Hardy County. They're going to come back and ask for more funding, like within two weeks.
Right.
Okay, so think about this. At the same time, the County Commission is out of the general fund allocating to West Hardy to be put toward future ambulance service, a future ambulance. Now, the Hardy County Commission didn't have any say in that. So we're going to be asked for more money for our county agency while at the same time we're putting money out to West Hardy. And I think that's a question that should be asked. Like, is that what we need to be doing in the immediate? I don't know. But I think that any county commission that wasn't thinking about that fact, I mean, you have to, that has to be brought up. So we're going to be asked, because this isn't in our budget. That extra is not in our budget. They're going to ask us this month. Over the past two months, I think they've asked for an extra about 70,000, probably 65 to 70,000. That's extra. So...
Correct.
Over the past two months, it's actually three months in expenses. But at the same time, we're, you know, there's going to be 10,000 that comes out and it goes to West Hardy. And maybe the, I'm not, maybe it is the right decision to purchase, you know, to be saving for a new ambulance. It, of course, it makes sense that it would be. I don't, I'm not saying that that doesn't make sense from West Hardy's position. I'm saying from Hardy County's, doesn't make sense to do that. And I don't know if it does.
Okay, so you talk about the devils in the details. And I agree with that. The devils in the details, you're giving them $100,000 a month. The past couple of months, you have supported them with multiple funding. You took the money out of general funds when we came and asked for help with that because you didn't have the money, because they used all of the money.
Yes. And that's what was brought up about the ratios.
It wasn't our choice to be able to take that out of general funds. It's because there wasn't any money in the EMS fund. And the County Commission at the time saw the need for what we were asking for and allocated that money. And so we already have an ambulance ordered. So the money that is in the savings account now is going to be drained when that that comes in because we have been fiscally responsible to not come with our handout saying, we need a new ambulance. We put it back.
Sure.
So instead of looking at us and saying, I'm not real sure about this 10,000 because they're going to come ask it for this 10,000. At what point did you look at them and say, where did you save money?
That's what I just did this morning.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I just did.
So you keep handing them that, but now you brought up this $10,000. Now you're saying that, you know, about our capital expenditure fund and things like that, and you shouldn't be doing that when you need to give them money. How much more? How much more are we going to do?
Well, that's what was brought up this morning.
That's what I'm saying. What is the answer?
Well, the answer, we're at this place right now where we just put, we just made the motion for someone to find a person to head up this task force. That's the answer. But it's, it's going to be a little slow in coming. And it should have been done some time ago. But that's where we are right now. And all that I'm saying, I don't know if it's the right thing to do. I don't know that it is. If you have a county, because, you know, it's not going to be immediate that we're going to stop giving in Hardy County, you know, this such and such amount of money either. That's also not going to be immediate. But is it, is it, can a better case be made that an immediate answer would be to not do this 10,000? I think that's legitimate. It absolutely could be the better short term.
Can I ask the citizen some questions?
Yeah, sure.
She just, she just made a comment. Do you have time to do the study? Because she just made a comment that they're going to be broke.
Yeah.
I mean, do you have time? What's that, you know, what's the...
So they're going to be broke?
Yeah, I'm talking about county funds.
The county funds are going to be broke. Do you have time to do that study? Or do you need to take more emergency immediate action? Because if our EMS goes broke, we're screwed.
Like, what, what more, what, what more immediate action would you mean?
I don't, I don't know. She just told me that the county funds are going to be broke. So I guess if you're...
I don't know what she actually means either by that.
Because you're looking at the funds that you have, that you reported in your last meeting of what we have left in the funds from the EMS authority. And they keep taking that much extra money. You don't have that to give.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's what I'm saying. It's going to be broke. And so it keeps continuing to be handouts and handouts and handouts. And no offense, but a year ago, I was sitting in this room and brought you guys this problem because you asked me to. And then it's like, now you're like, we don't have time. Well, you've had a year and nobody's looked at it.
I have looked at it. But yes, I have looked at it.
But it's been a year.
Okay, I have looked at it. I do think from the county's point, county's point of view, it would make sense to, to think about that 10,000. And to continue working, you know, to put the person in place who's... And to continue working, you know, to put the person in place who's going to lead this group and come up with better answers. I think that, um, but yeah.
So sir, and taking this 10,000 away, what you're going to cause is I have to revamp my system and I have to decrease funding somewhere, decrease the personnel that I have. When I am spending this much of the budget, according to how much they're spending, why can't you look at them and say immediately fix your personnel problem? Put your people in charge. Why is it to us?
I think that it could be. And we maybe can make that decision today about whether we're not going to get that, get that additional funding. Because, you know, like just doing the back of the envelope, there's a, there's a very hard numbers to look at. Like you're 30%, 33% on the personnel, 100% on the fuel costs. You can, the personnel, uh, personnel expenditures are way too high. It's because of the business model that's been adopted. So something has to give somewhere.
We run paper call 5:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I don't have people in station, but I have people committed, two crews.
I'm fine, I'm fine with doing something about Hardy County. Uh, they're, they're not here. I'm sure they will have something.
They are here. Say about that.
He's strong.
You all might want to come in here.
I, I do want to answer what, want to answer one of your questions. Uh, with what we have collected currently have in the ambulance fee, uh, account, we anticipate that at the current level of drain plus, it's less than two years till we hit the wall. And, and that's, that's what we see, which is why we made the motion and moved forward to put a levy out this year.
All right, I was just afraid when she said that, we were talking like a couple of months. We were going to be gone.
And, and like I say, we, we understand that the cost for operating that service over there is more than the cost here. There, there's income things that are different as well, uh, here versus there. And, uh, so, you know, while we continue to look for, uh, you know, meaningful ways to address the problem, uh, there's no easy answer. And, uh, like I say, that's where, that's where we're at now and why the move to say, let's put together a group of folks that know what's going on and try to find ways to do this more, uh, efficiently, uh, while maintaining the outstanding level of service that we're providing. And, uh, and like I say, right now, um, I think in, in looking at where we are, I think, you know, West Hardy has done a very good job at budgeting what they have been given and utilizing those resources, uh, to get the maximum effect, uh, for, uh, half the county and still stand ready to support others as they need mutually. And, uh, so, uh, you know, at this point in time, I, I, I'm not in favor of changing anything financially, uh, today. Uh, but I, I do think we need to look at this and, uh, and ask some tough questions.
That's kind of the idea. That's why this has been brought up today is because we wanted to look at it and ask tough questions.
And, and that's been done. The tough questions are there. There are no answers.
Well, so what, what, what will happen to Hardy County if we, we don't vote to for the additional funding this month?
Oh, you mean, yeah. Well, we have certain obligations that we put after. But then after that, if we make a couple of stipulations required, cut service.
We just, um, go a little bit further about what cuts, cutting services means because if, like the actual day to day, how that looks. Because when you say cut services, it's going to be personnel. It's going to be personnel, so you're not going to have as many people, it won't just start to show up immediately. Like basically, you're going to just kind of think about how that's going to look. You're not going to schedule as many people and then.
And when it runs out, like between now and then, when you get the cut, you either have to raise the fees.
Second crew.
And just don't take it out of the general county until needed.
I'm going to head to the other meeting, tell y'all it's going to be lonely.
I was trying to get, so that, that. I'm going to the other meeting. That's the turkey a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we would need to address the question of, is the second year coming from, where we used to have one, we had half of all money. But also, Wardensville was able to help ourselves a little bit better.
Now, or at that point, at that point?
That's half of the work, something. Now, when we're able to, I would think, as I alluded to this morning, that was one way we were able to have a cost.
So is it, um, it's all, if we, would people need to be let go or if you keep, still keep the same people and just cut back on time?
Well, you would, I mean, we would beg it to stay on as hard time, you would end up losing. Yeah, there's, and we have 12, 12, 15. Four, is that right?
Six.
Six. Five, depending on that third person. Do you touch that? If you took that second rule, five.
Does that model include your directors actually being scheduled on a truck?
Yeah. You cannot schedule that.
Your job description can change shape and it's a waste of two, two directors. It all depends on what your job description and your contract is.
What particular? What'd you want?
What part of you?
Because I mean, and you're saying that, but I've heard both of these on the radio.
Does it come in early, steady?
So you're saying you can't recall, it's just been on the radio, record calls on the local, or you want to call that.
Pause is that really?
We can do it, um, in emergency cases. It's our, it's our job duty, it's not their job. It's in fact, it's hard.
It'd be 20,000.
So you'd have to do a new contract saying that you are exempt employees. It's not that it cannot happen, it's that it has to be structured so that it can.
Right. But you're going to ask me to do that. I'm going to take 100% of my, to do this, baby.
We see.
And Mr. Sheeter said, devil's in the details, but the two paid salary directors can go on a truck. That's what's now.
So like, do you have to change your policy now before that happens or could that happen? Like, so just say, personnel is, is decreased in Wardensville. Like, can it happen now? Like, in a worst case, you know, we're trying to save the life, like, can you go out on a truck?
We do it now.
You do it now? So there'd be, there's a little flexibility is, is what I'm hearing, right? Okay, there's, that's, that's very important.
We cover the truck, we just don't schedule it here.
Okay, so.
So like Saturday, I was on the call, or you had a quick call. And so I know it wasn't, that I was spending more Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, but it, now, so is that the only costs that are tied to this? Or is there, is there like debt? Is there, is there a bill that would be tied, tied to this additional funding? Is there any bills?
Oh, yeah. Well, so the insurance, um, would be tied to it. I mean, really the only way you're going to cut is this.
Okay, so it will be that. And there is some flexibility. There is a little flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's good. Um, all right.
Yeah, because the initial motion and stuff that were made over the, the discussion that happened with Wardensville was it wasn't going to cost anything additional, that it was going to save money over time.
On this, sir, on this, can we, um, on that dissolution clause, I really would appreciate if you guys would look into that. Because do you understand that it's, it would only be rational for our county commission to be thinking some of that, if in the case, once again, we don't have any plans for that, we're not moving toward that. We just want to know, we have a nonprofit that's working with us.
I understand that. But your, your donation and your money and stuff that you gave to West Hardy was actually investing into the community, to their safety, to their treatment. So, I mean.
Well, all I'm saying, if you.
The county's cooked, they're going to, by us treating them.
Sure, no, there's no question of that. But if you have a clause in it, it's going to go. If potentially there is something there, it's going to go somewhere. It could be that the county's mentioned, you know, because something's going to happen there, potentially, if there is anything there. And we just should mention the county as part of that because maybe another nonprofit will be created, you know, to make use of those assets and, but I don't know that it will. Just something worth looking at.
We'll put it on our next, at the end of the meeting.
West Hardy, if you take over a year, we, our paper call shifts total was 9,000 hours a year.
We're getting a good balance.
Unless you go out. So the county's shaving a total of a month.
There's no question. We, I, I don't question that call. We could see that from the very beginning. Yes, absolutely.
Between 400 and 500.
Yeah, absolutely.
810 for a call cost.
Yeah. Well, we didn't, we don't have any, you know, it's not your will to do it. I don't, it's not my will to do, to, but I did want to bring the discussion up to see what kind of flexibility is there, which I think we learned some things about that. And I feel, I feel that we're in a better place in terms of our knowledge of the situation than we were before this meeting started.
And, and I think, you know, you're, you're, you know, looking at the numbers and making some overall comparisons and then obviously looking out further. I think all those things are, are, and will continue to be important going forward.
Right.
All righty. I think this one's a fairly short one. Regional meeting with local VFD chiefs in the, uh, West Virginia State Auditor's Office. We attended that meeting, uh, at the state auditor's training and, uh, it, it appears that, uh, obviously our volunteer fire companies are going to be scrutinized, uh, again, more closely. The scary part of that discussion is it appears that the state auditor's office is trying to funnel that back to the county commissions, which I do not like that scenario, uh, where we wind up being the, uh, the auditor, as it was. Uh, anyway, I, I see the justification, I understand that. But, uh, you know, we did get a letter from Governor Justice and, uh, of course, you know, during that regular session last, uh, year, this, this letter's dated the 14th of, uh, August. But, uh, during legislative session, uh, they approved $3 million of the 12 that they allocated be set aside, uh, to be distributed to all county fire protection, uh, organizations. And, uh, Hardy County's allocation, uh, for these funds for 2024 amounts to $24,153.50, or 27 cents. And, uh, the legislation requires the governor's office to distribute the funds directly to the county commissions. And the county commissions are then further required to distribute these funds to all fire departments in those counties for the exclusive benefit of fire protection or emergency services in the county. $24,000 is not a lot of money. But that's what we've got.
I mean, as much as we've put in.
Yeah.
We've put about four times that.
And it's, yeah, not as much as what we've tried to at least look for and distribute or allocate. Uh, so the second allocation of these funds is going to be distributed again sometime very shortly, uh, and once they have in place all the information that they need about county excess levies, and I suspect that'll be after the November election, when some of these fire levies that are on the ballot now will be considered. So I just, I guess wanted to, we wanted to put that out there, Mr. Clerk, is there anything else that you had on that? Commissioners, is there anything else that you took from that meeting?
Well, that we should be working to set that meeting up.
Yeah, yeah. So we probably ought to see if we can get a date with the fire chiefs and, uh, talk about that allocation and the one that's coming and how best that money could be distributed to them for use.
So I guess we'll just have that on our list to go.
Do we need to contact the?
Yeah, see if you can, see if you can set us up a date.
Contact and try to set that up. That would be really good.
Yeah, see if you can set us up a date to meet with the fire chiefs. Kelly Shockey, Circuit Clerk. Good morning, Matt Clerk.
Good morning. As you know, um, I was here at your last meeting with my memorandum of understanding from the Supreme Court where we have secured a live scan machine to be used between the courthouse and all of the, uh, law enforcement agencies. Um, they'll be providing me, the Supreme Court, a big cabinet, a computer system, which will have the monitor, the printers, um, CPUs, all of that. I just need a room in order to put that equipment in. We have the three rooms, um, up on the second floor by our offices. Um, two of them were where we held defendants that came from the regional jail. Now that we have the jail cells up there, those rooms really are not used a whole lot. And we still have another room down there where clients can meet with their attorneys and all that. So I am just asking for one of those rooms to be used that we can put this equipment in. Uh, law enforcement agencies will have access when they bring people up to a rain, when we have grand jury, they'll be able to scan them and do everything in, at that one time.
Is it?
Sheriff was okay with it.
Sure, is everyone? Is there any problems with anyone?
No, um, all three agencies wrote letters in support of the project that I had to send to the Supreme Court and all that also. So they are all looking forward to having this machine.
No, I'm good with it. I'll make a motion to approve the use of the one.
Second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would remind the group that one of the things that was part of that memorandum of understanding, which we adopted to go forward on this thing, was the fact that the county would provide resources for maintenance of that equipment. And I think I had to ask at that point in time if that would be presented to us in your budget.
It will, from what I've understood from the, uh, state police, they do have one of these machines up there. There's not much maintenance to it at all. I mean, you'll have ink that goes in the printer, just like any other copier in paper for, to print things out. So there's not going to be a whole lot of maintenance to the machines at all.
We will look to the Circuit Clerk's office to make sure that that gets included in the budget.
I can just put it, yeah, put it in my supplies or do another category for supplies for that, but it's not going to be very much at all.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing them, see the vote, all those in favor, think five saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, the ayes. Abbott motion carries.
I would also like to ask for an executive session also. I don't know if you want me to come back later.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we're, yeah, if you wouldn't mind. All right. Wendy Branson, you are up.
Last but not least, right? So, um, I wanted to let you guys know what you all have seen. Um, we are hosting a rabies clinic, um, with South Ranch Animal Hospital. It's going to be held here on September the 17th from 5:00 to 7:00. Um, Dr. Leslie Poreesi will be here. There are flyers that I've posted, Peggy has posted on our social media page. Bill Hours just took some flyers down for the courthouse. He said that he would also, not with courthouse, the health department. He also said when he did his, um, septic inspections throughout the county, he would, um, distribute those, um, papers, maybe to like the local businesses or things like that. Um, but I've had two phone calls on it already and people were, you know, excited because they actually had taken advantage of it last year and they want to take advantage of it again because they had gotten more animals, so.
How much money do we have available for that clinic?
Um, it's $9 per shot. Um, it's nine dollars per shot and I haven't checked to see how much money we have available. I know last year, the, it didn't go very well, so we didn't, I mean, Leslie just said, I think we gave like less than ten shots.
Oh.
So, I mean, it wasn't, it was time of year, it was like in November, it was cold, I mean, so we decided to move it up to where we're, we still have some daylight in the evening hours. So, and it just was one of those things that it just didn't get properly advertised. So, this year we've decided that we're going to start pushing, you know, more and more to get it advertised, especially since there's, is a problem of rabies in the county, what it sounds like.
Yes.
But I will find out how much money is, um, or what we can do for that. Um, dog pound update. I have made a spreadsheet and this will probably be changing as things go along, since this is the first month of this, just to see what categories would need to be added, um, if any categories need to be added. But I'd listed the dates, um, and then where the dogs were picked up from. Um, as of eight twenty-nine, we've, um, we have twelve dogs at the pound, um, remaining. There were, during the month of August, um, we had, let me just a second. During the month of August, um, there were eleven dogs that were dropped off to the pound. Um, Far took seven of those dogs. Four of them were returned back to the owner and Jim found six for, um, six in, for new owners of the dogs. So, that leaves us with twelve at the pound. And, um, he did ask, he, um, had some hounds out there that looked like they were, um, they were showing signs of worms and he saw worms in their store.
Over that last figure once again, uh, the six, you go over that line.
Um, he found six new homes. So, they were previously at the pound. That was previous month, I don't know how many previous last month there was, since this is the first month that we've been starting to track it. I could look at his paperwork and see, but I don't have.
You're keeping that in a sheet, right?
Yeah, I'm just going off with what Jim has, but it's on.
We will see like, uh, next month.
Yeah, yeah, since this is the first month.
Running, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, um, he asked if we could get some, so, some sort of wormer, so I talked to Leslie at the animal hospital and we got, um, Panacure for the dogs and he did worm those dogs and...
Okay. Um, and also, something else, uh, Jim needs, has requested a power washer and, um, two dog houses.
Yes, two igloo houses.
So, that's why I, that's why I sent out for this to be on the agenda. I did put in parentheses, you know, you're giving the dog pound update, but I believe we can vote on that since it's an agenda item, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to put limited funds on it or just whatever he needs or whether you getting the gas or you getting electric power washer. I mean, there's a lot of.
But sure, yeah, right.
The one that he had out there previous, the pressure washer, I think we, him and I had this discussion, it's been months ago, and I was wondering about the same thing about, you know, are we going to get gas or, you know, what kind of pressure washer? Um, I made the mention of maybe possibly getting an electric one, just because you wouldn't have to fool with gas. Jim's, um, response was, you know, the electric isn't as powerful as the gas. And we all know that. So, um, we just left it, I mean, it was left at that. So, I don't know.
I think we should do a, um, you know, approval based on, because you're the, you're the kind of been identified as the person, based upon, um, Wendy working with Jim for an acceptable price on an acceptable power washer, something like that.
And I'm sure.
Your, your discretion.
I think so, so we can move ahead with it, but, I mean, it's, I don't think it will be, I don't think it's going to be anything.
It's not going to be astronomical.
No, I don't think so.
If we all know Jim, and I'll, I'll tell you what he said after I make the other announcement about what I learned.
We'll vote.
Me second.
Did we second that?
No, that.
Make the motion.
You accept that as a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Power washer.
And the two dog houses.
Two dog houses.
At Wendy's discretion on the cost.
All right.
I'll make a second.
All right, been properly moved. Second, any further discussion? I, I do want to bring one thing up. Last week, I drove by there and pulled in, took a look. Those crates are still there that we bought in April?
Yes, and that is something that is going to be.
Is that what, if he needs the dog houses to put in those crates?
Yes, he does.
I think that's what Jim told me when I, I dropped him one off after a use.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I told him that if we got the houses, that we would.
I saw that and I said, you know, okay, that's.
Okay.
And Anthony and the, still Anthony and the parks, the guys at the park, they will help him if he does need help, because those are a little tedious when it comes to a one person to do it, you know, unfortunately.
I agree, yeah.
But if anybody knows Jim, um, you know, I'd ask him, not that we have an abundance of money, because we don't, but I ask him to make a wish list, you know, of things that he knew that he's, you know, possibly going to need. And he said, only thing I need is a pressure washer and two igloo dog boxes. He didn't go into elaboration of, and, you know, most people, if you say give them a wish list, they're reaching for the stars.
Okay, and also, in addition to that, so there's been a person who, um, has offered, uh, the person installs many split, heating, air conditioning units, and they've, they've volunteered to install one free of charge out there. I've spoken to the person over the phone. Um, I know that Steve Pendleton has spoken to the person over the phone. So, we kind of though, I needed, I needed to bring this up on a commission's agenda because I'm kind of, I don't know. I mean, I would be in favor of going forward with this person, um, because some extra costs come because of that. Um, it's going to be a little, and electricity cost, I'm certain. Um, I don't, you know, he has said that he will install it also free of charge. I think there's some checks that need to be put on all of this, you know, in terms of worry about any cost associated with it, but, um, it should be something that we, that we vote on.
One thing we need to ask about that is, um, maintenance and what type of warranty? Because.
He says he will maintain it and he says, you know, like, he's fine with the warranty.
Okay.
All right, we do have motion on the floor for a power washer and two hutches. Is there any further discussion? Hearing them proceed to vote, all those in favor, think five saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it.
Can I say something just real quick? Dog pound, is it nonprofit?
It's.
The, the dog pound is the county's.
It's the county.
It's under the county, so it's nonprofit.
Park of rights, right for their grant program. They'll give you, once a year, they'll give you, um, a gift certificate. It's four years over here. How much?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty dollars. So, you can apply for that every year and that might help you with power.
Oh, definitely. Thank you.
Do we want to take action on the mini splitter or do you think we, do we have enough information to proceed or do we need more?
I would get more information. I mean, just outside of just my recommendation, um, have them to write you a proposal on what the units want to be, you know, making.
I just reached out to the person. I'm not going to be the point man necessarily.
Yeah, I can. I mean, that's not a problem. I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you just.
Probably what you need to do is to have the guy came there one day and looked it over and make sure to have sufficient place to mount it and that it'll work properly there like, like they think it. It's their game, they should have those answers. If everything's good, then I don't have issues with it, but maybe that's what we need to do.
With regard to the information that Wendy's assimilated together for us here, um, is there any other information that we would benefit from having regarding our dog situation?
Well, okay, hold on one second. Yeah, there always is. Um, hold on, let me find that paper. One thing I would say, you're, you're putting this into an Excel sheet, right? I think we should put it into a Google shared folder.
Okay.
Because it's very difficult to have papers given to you, because basically to actually look at it, you have to go input that back into, into a sheet yourself. So, it would be better to have it in Excel in a shared folder, um, and then from that, if it is, and if it's kept monthly, then you actually have a trend. You can look at what's actually happening, because, so that's what I would say. Like, so related to all of this, if we only have it in this format, I think it will be very difficult to keep up with, because I think the other task of going and putting this into your Excel spreadsheet yourself is going to be something that, but if it's, if it's done like that, I think that would be a much better situation.
Being the first month and this happening here, it's, it's fluid and can change anytime, so.
Yes.
Whatever we need to do.
Okay. I'm sorry, what?
Um, I'm not finished with, I'm finished with the dog pound information, but.
If I could just take a couple.
Sure.
Time's tight here. Uh, first, I want to, uh, thank the Commissioner from Wendy Branson for meeting me and Jim Schu at the, uh, dog pound, I think, I believe, a week after the last county commission meeting. It was a good meeting we had. We had some positive outcomes about volunteers coming in and leave, but, uh, Commissioner Shitrum has, Wendy has also checked on the insurance situation for that.
Yeah.
And, uh, also, we've, you know, talked about some point maybe forming a, some type of an oversight board and that's somewhere down the road. Uh, but we also had some discussions about, you know, Wendy coming in and taking photographs of the dogs so that we can place on our website and in an effort to try to adopt some of these dogs out, uh, which maybe creates a little more space and it won't put as much pressure on, uh, Mr. Schu. Uh, also, uh, Commissioner Shitrum and Wendy Branson also came to a special meeting of our board, uh, I think a week after that, and at that meeting, we discussed, uh, for a, uh, an offer by a private citizen here to, uh, donate fifty thousand dollars toward the building of a new animal shelter, uh, or possibly expanding the current one we have. Uh, I believe the consensus is that we, we want to go forward trying to build a brand new shelter. This would be, uh, based on a, a task force that would be hopefully developed soon, uh, and that would conduct a capital campaign, you know, to build that shelter. And we're potentially looking at four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars for a thirty-six hundred square foot facility with house both cats and dogs. And that's just today's figures. And we figured a puppy potentially could take two to three years to raise that kind of money, but it would start with fifty thousand dollars that this individual has, uh, donated. And we were hoping on that task force that we would have somebody representing, at least one or two people in the county, uh, one, uh, person from the town, and I went to a meeting on the twentieth and discussed all of this with the town council. Uh, we reached out to Lauren Arvog to try to get somebody from the Chamber of Commerce Board to sit on this task force. I think we need some business leaders as well, perhaps, uh, you know, our two veterinarians or at least one of those. We'd like to have a meeting sometime in October to at least have some initial discussion about the feasibility of this and how we want to move forward.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Sure, right.
And I, I did send her, I copied you, I think, on that email. I did send and ask whether it's covered by our current policy.
Right, right.
Uh, well, because she asked specifically what, uh, how many volunteers have been identified and, um, what type of work that would be done. You saw, I sent her back. I emailed her back. I, I didn't hear anything since then, but I'm, she will, I'm sure.
So, it appears that the county's already covered or?
Yes, it does, depending on those two questions is what I, what I got from.
Well, I, I have, uh, not publicized this, uh, on our Facebook page as far as reaching out and asking people to pay one volunteer. Two people have already done this, just by knowing that some discussions. But, you know, at some point, we would like to put that out, though, once we get the clear, you know, the green light, the guy should do that. We'll, uh, we'll, uh, provide that for you.
I think Fran had that added to the insurance work, when she worked with the cert to have volunteers covered, our county's policy, if I'm not wrong.
And they would sound a, a wayward, obviously, yeah.
We haven't set the policy for cert volunteers?
For cert, yeah, yeah. The other thing you need to do, you know, the, the cert's got a, has their program where you get your own insurance, but they, uh, tool.
Yeah, the, that the, that the volunteer organization, correct? Yeah, and I think that would be something that humane society should check on.
What's that? It's called tool program from our insurance company. You get your own insurance through them. That's what you do if you're renting a building down the park or you're supposed to be doing that. I hope you're doing that.
It would be good for us to know that, too, what they say about that. Um, actually, when I, when she does get back to me, I'll ask her that question.
At what point would, would the, as far as the county being represented on this task force, would that just be something that would be volunteered by somebody?
It would be appointed.
Would it be appointed?
We will appoint the person to be on the task force.
Sure.
We can do that.
Um, just to piggyback off of, um, the discussion for the, um, dog pound, um, last year, we applied, um, for a Stanton Foundation K-9 grant through, um, Friends, it's called FO. Um, it's, um, I forget what the, what the, it's a grassroots company and I forget what that, what that stands for. Anyway, they offered, um, an application, um, grant process. We applied, we did not get it because it was a very competitive grant. It was pretty much first come, first served. Um, from what my understanding of the actual need, there were other people that needed far worse than what we did. However, I was contacted on Thursday evening that since we did apply last year, that they have opened up the funding again, and this is something that's not usually happens, and that, um, if we are wanting to apply for that again, um, it sounds like, they didn't come right out and say, but it sounds like that we would be approved and the grant would be between twenty, two, excuse me, twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand. Um, they're very excited for this to be notified, very excited for us to be notified of the grant opportunity for the capital improvements of your shelter. So, if we would get that, that would tremendously help the need at our, um, animal, or at our shelter pound.
Absolutely.
So, I did.
You'd get for a nice pressure washer for that.
Yeah. And when I asked Jim, I, I did tell Jim about this and he said, all I want is igloo boxes and some paint and a pressure washer, and that's all he said. So, um, I went ahead and submitted our application again. I don't know, last year it was pretty quick when it came back, so I don't know if it's going to be the same process or not, but this letter that, that I received does sound very promising that we will get funded for something this year between those dollar amounts.
That'll.
Dave, you already talked about the fire protection funding.
Yeah.
Just to let you guys know that the EMS salary enhancement questionnaire, um, with the help of Paul, um, that was completed and that was sent in on the twenty-sixth, so.
Yeah, and I do want to bring up something just a little bit more on the EMS, since it's on the agenda again. So, the statement was made that no work has been, has been done. I do want to argue strongly that that is not true. I've worked on this EMS pretty substantially, so, the, uh, EMS salary enhancement, that comes from SB seven thirty-seven, which I did work on with the, uh, with MSAC as well as the County Commissioners Association. I came onto the, uh, uh, ACAA board in January. Um, I've worked on it since that point, so just to make sure you know that, or to set the record straight, because that's just simply not true. That work didn't happen. It has, okay? So, uh, it's just not true. I, I want to, so I'm arguing that point with you and saying that you, you've said an incorrect thing. Um, so, yeah, mu- much work has been done.
Noted.
Not everyone needs to. Not everyone needs to agree with it, but we do need tough questions to be asked. That's what we're doing, and hopefully we'll come up with better answers. But, yeah, just wanted to make that... Just wanted to argue that point.
So, anyway, the questionnaire has been completed and we did get a receipt. It was received. We did get notification regarding future opioid funds. The Patrick Morrissey's office sent out a projected future payments from opioid settlements. It looks like in the projection that Hardy County... Just Hardy County will receive $163,324.40 for... In the total of year 2024 to year 2028. That's projected dispersment total. It looks like that the town of Wardensville...
Is that annually?
That's a combined.
2024 to 2028.
2024 to 2028, total $160.
$163,324.40.
That's from the state.
Yeah. And it breaks down to, like, this year, we got $29,694.05. The 2025 projected is $23,714. And it goes year '26. '27 is up to $37,000, and year '28 is $35,000. So the beginning totals of the 2024 and 2025, from what I've read, it's actually because of the attorney fees. That's the... That was the biggest why there's a difference in those amounts. Where '24... Excuse me, '26 and up, that's why your amounts have increased. But the town of Wardensville, they're supposed to receive $747 in a total of four years. So they don't... They're getting about $100, $170 per year. Just to give you guys an update. And I'm going... I need a resolution signed to apply for the West Virginia Dilapidated Properties Program. Dave, I believe you have that.
I have that before me. Resolution to apply for funding for dilapidated structures, basically, obviously recognizing the urgent need to breathe new life into communities. Hardy County Commission is enthusiastically embracing the opportunity to seek financial assistance through a grant offered by the Department of Environmental Protection. Again, while endorsing this submission of this application of the aforementioned grant, the action demonstrates the unwavering commitment to the comprehensive revitalization and renovation of our county, addressing the issue of dilapidated structures head-on and ensuring a bright future for our community. And I think from the Planning Commission side, this is something that I believe they've talked about needing to address.
No, no. Maybe they... I'm sure they have talked about that sum. This came from... We had missed... We didn't receive funding for last year. So we contacted John King. John King is the person with the DEP who oversees this dilapidated buildings program. We got in our survey. I forget what the date of that was, but anyway, we got in our survey. And then this is the, you know, part of those... Part of that process, yeah. So hopefully, we'll get it this year. I think there's...
The only part of the Planning Commission was involved was when we were trying to come up with a...
Yeah, yeah, this is...
Not a resolution, but a ordinance.
That's where I was thinking about discussing this. Was part of that ordinance.
And they... The one that Greg Puckett sent us was not quite...
What we needed.
The Law Clinic is really... They already got one put together. Actually, Melissa should have it. We have not approved it yet, but Melissa should have it.
Because that's one thing, like John King says that, you know, we need that.
We need that in place to qualify.
We also... What would help us is that if we have an MOU signed with the town, that would be very helpful. I sent to Lucas Gagnon the... Because I called a guy named Dave Workman in Canola County because John King points to...
There is two of them.
Yeah, there are, there are. And, yeah. So John King points to Canola County as being a good example of a county that has excellent MOUs with other municipalities within the town. But I think he's okay with it, Lucas Gagnon, I mean. But it would be helpful if we have that. It looks better on the application.
We actually, if you remember, Betsy of town of Wardensville, she had mentioned to us about doing an MOU because they've already qualified and received grant monies for some of their buildings in the Wardensville area. So if we're going to do memos, we maybe should do one for both areas.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution to apply for this funding for dilapidated structures. And properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it.
I just have a couple more things that'll be real quick. Just to let you guys know that I'm going to be applying for a grant, energy efficiency conservation with a block funding that you could receive up to $37,000. Melvin had asked me to look for grants for some of our lighting in the courthouse because between light bulbs, fixtures, and ballasts, since COVID, they went astronomically high. So I did mention something about it to Greg, and we feel that the lighting would be beneficial, you know, maybe cost-effective, maybe to replace some of the light. I don't have a resolution yet because I just got this on, like, Wednesday of last week. But just to let you guys know, I'll be having a resolution to apply for this grant for that.
I think we did that last time. It was through Reg 88.
Yes. And one last thing. Fran Welton had sent me an email on Thursday just to let everyone know that September is National Emergency Preparedness Month. She, you know, said to reach out to our State Director. Her name is Gina Namay. If we want to do anything, you know, just to make awareness about that said month. That's all I have.
All righty. Any questions for Wendy? All righty. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Clerk Ely.
Yes, sir. I have no order barring objections to the state. They were putting this aside.
Okay.
The homeworkers don't need a list of election officials for... Or have a list for approval, and they include our friends at the plea. And the James Johnson, Ryan Kelly, and Rob T. Do that. And these are the same people that we had and wound up with in the primary. And there will definitely, you know, be changes between now and election. We are getting some more workers to pick it up.
Do you need any motion to approve this emergency absentee ballot commissioner or list of election officials approved?
Yeah, we need the election officials, including the emergency.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion of such.
I'll make the motion to... However you want to word it, to what he needs it.
All right. For the emergency absentee ballot commissioners and the list of election officials for approval.
Okay.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it.
Let me see your... Let me see your sheet.
Which sheet?
Which sheet?
Yeah, she got anything on the... On the bank to close? The bank closure?
Yeah, it has... Is it all there? The commission ordered to close and hold this.
There is a... It's an old Krantz estate. That's been sitting out for a long time, and some people need to... They want to do something with that land, split it, being most two family members. They can't do a lot of that stake on them. The commission does have the power to close those estates after they get a certain age.
Are they both... Are they... All the parties are in favor?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there's no...
They just want to split it.
Okay.
You say it's Krantz estate?
It is. It was a Krantz estate, yes. And I could get that if you want to. It's kosher.
All right.
It's a going extension.
All right.
On the motion?
Sure.
I'll make the motion from giving them the power to close the estates on the Krantz estate that is...
Specifically talking about, seconded. All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Aye.
Three ayes, the ayes have it. Motion carries. One thing that was not... Okay.
They did our... And this was previously approved. That's why I did just put it on there. I want to let you know. Our grant equipment cost for the election equipment was $144,000. And we got $82,262.10.
Good deal.
It was approved. They put the president's signature on that.
All right. You need a motion to that effect or just we've already did this?
We did agree to that.
All right.
It's just that's basically staying... I had a little museum money for political activities.
Sounds good. One of the things that was not on the agenda originally, but that was requested to be added after the fact, was in the process leading up to the close of the last month, the prosecuting attorney's office had an employee that left employment to receive or seek employment elsewhere. And given the fact that the court is going on, the prosecutor asked for permission to go ahead and hire a... An emergency... Make an emergency hire. And I don't know if we need to bring him in to have that individual presented today or... You want to see? Yeah, let's take five minutes. Stephen moved. You seconded. All in favor, aye.
To approve Macy Faltz to be the new administrative assistant in my office. I mean, she's more than qualified. And I'm going to ask you to tell me a little about your education experience, Macy.
So I went to Shamrock State and got my bachelor's degree there in business management. And then I went to WGU online and got my master's. And it's an MBA, so business administration.
She's more than qualified. I mean, she's probably the most qualified person I've ever hired. And she's got the personality, and she's got the looks. I mean, she's my second cousin. I don't know if y'all know that. So, yeah, she's my second cousin, yeah. So... But I think she's well fit for the office. And I ask you all for the approval, the consent and authority to hire her.
I did mention the fact that this was not a regular agenda item. However, with the, you know, justification that this is kind of a... You were left with one short and...
Right.
This is kind of right in the middle of court season.
It is in your budget.
I have plenty of money in the budget to cover it. It's just that it wasn't on... Probably on agenda. And I tried to... I wanted to hire her last Friday, but...
Right.
But Dave called me and said, "I need to y'all's advice and consent." And that's what I'm asking for the advice and consent of y'all to hire her. Because, I mean, we're short-staffed right now, and she's going to be... I think she'll be an excellent fit for the office.
No, I appreciate that. I do want to mention something to you on that advice and consent. We were advised by the Auditor's Office that there was... We had much more power in that... Or much more discretion was allowed for the commission than what we've been told before. Okay? So there's a debate within our state evidently on this about what that actually means. You know, the 777.
Right. I'm aware of that.
Okay, okay, sorry. Sorry. With the 777, and we've been advised that there is more there. And I do think it's important. And because if you do have an authority that is given to you, you should hold to it.
Right.
And keep it. Because if you don't check on things, anything can happen. And so that's where... That's where it was important for me.
Right, right. Well, there has to be checks and balances. There absolutely has to be checks and balances. And there's Supreme Court case law on this matter as well that basically says, I mean, y'all have the authority to deny somebody to... For me to hire somebody. But, I mean, but I mean, but there's also authority that says that elected official can hire whoever they want to hire. And there is debate. There is debate. There is debate going on whether y'all have the authority to do it.
It would be best if...
But, and I think this is the wise move to come to y'all, ask y'all for y'all's permission, you know, because, I mean, y'all the ones that budget me. Y'all always adequately budgeted me, and y'all adequately always taking care of the prosecutor's office. You know, and I don't know if y'all know this, but we're the platinum standard in this state. I mean, our prosecutor's office is one of the best in this state, you know. And... But we have to maintain that, you know. And I think Macy will be a big addition to that, yes.
Good deal.
Well, I'll tell you, I've been here for six, seven years. And in the past, and I ain't picking one, Brian Moore was probably the worst one. I'd see deputies out here walking around, and I didn't have a clue what their name was.
Right.
I was like, damn, we're supposed to have the final say in these hires. And that's one of the reasons, in a way, it's kind of nice to be able to maybe call her by name when I see her.
Right, right, right.
And who knows who it is.
And it wasn't that I was trying to hire her prior to Friday. I was going to come to y'all and ask y'all for permission. We're just so short-staffed. And I wanted to hire her Friday to get her feet... Start getting her feet on the ground and start moving.
And like I say, with the holiday weekend, we thought it was best kind of just put the brakes on right then and then wait till we got to this meeting.
Right, right.
But at this point in time, entertain a motion that we approve the prosecutor's request for the employment of this individual for service in his office.
So moved.
All right, I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, the ayes have it. We'll let the clerk know when he returns if we approve that.
I thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
She's going to be an excellent... And she's going to be excellent for the... She's going to be a big addition to the county.
We've got a lot of work coming up.
She does. And she's prepared for it.
Good.
Yeah. She is, she is. She's good. Yeah, thank you, guys.
All righty.
Thank you all.
When I review this, I'll let y'all know about it as soon as I get back to this.
Please, thank you. All righty. As far as the salary for payroll register, I'd entertain a motion at this point in time to approve the minutes from the August 6, 2024 regular meeting, the August 13 and August 20 special meetings, the exoneration settlements consolidations orders, the payroll register, which was from August 1 to August 15, And from August 16 through August 31, And the clerk's report of wills admitted, executors appointed, the clerk's report of administrators, curators, committees appointed, and the non-appointed estate filings contained in Exhibits A1 and those items afterward.
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Then a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it. Motion carries. The farmland preservation collected by the county clerk for the month of August That's $12,095.60. And the next regularly scheduled meeting, at least at this point in time, I'm sure there'll be another one scheduled for October 1, 2024. Is there any other business to come for the County Commission before we call back in the circuit clerk and honor her request for an executive session?
Would you like for me to message her?
If you would, please.
I'm going to make a motion for the executive. We'll wait until she's done then.
Well, Phil, anything you'd like to share?
Good.
All right.
Does that just go back into general county or is this?
It goes into the farmland preservation fund.
That's right.
For the.
Sorry, about to call my four-year-old grandson, he's found out FaceTime, I had my ringer off, I guess.
Hey.
When you get a FaceTime.
I understand how that works. I get random calls occasionally like that.
Oh, yeah.
Granny and grandpa and his things.
They know more about those phones than I do. Those are all completed.